Good evening. We'd like to call this meeting to order. Our first fiscal meeting of, our first meeting of fiscal year 2022. So we'll do our introductions. Denny Swenson, Chair.
Which P L Secretary?
Cheryl Togias, Member.
Kathleen O'Donnell, Member.
Julia Gannon, Clerk.
Excellent. Okay, for administrative items, our next meeting dates are July 22nd. But did you have a conference on the 22nd, Rich?
Um, no, not anymore.
Not anymore, okay. And Cheryl, you'll be calling in on the phone?
Yes.
And that meeting will be live, in person, the 22nd. Okay, all right. And then the next meeting will be August 12th.
I'm sorry, I won't be here that day.
That day, you have a game on the August 12th?
I'm sorry, the 22nd, July 22nd, but I will be here August 12th.
Oh, okay, so July 22nd isn't, isn't good for Rich. Could we change it to another day? Our next meeting from the 22nd to another day that week? How does that, do you have another day that might work? I could do the 21st, I could do the 20th.
Yeah, that's up to you folks. I mean, I'm not free the Monday, Thursday.
Okay, not for, okay, so it's either the 20th or 21st. Hello, Meredith, we're just looking at our calendar. Rich can't do our next meeting on July 22nd. Oh, no, come on up here.
What are we doing that day?
Um, 22nd.
Yeah, did we have anything big going on?
I'm afraid we might have.
Okay.
There you go, you're not supposed to.
440 Granite Ave or something.
And potentially zoning, that's the last day too.
Oh, yeah, it's the last day, yeah. Okay, so we're looking at July 20th or July 21st as our next meeting date because Rich can't do the 22nd?
On the 21st, I had signed up for the CHAPA program on drafting zoning amendments.
Okay.
How apt is that?
I do.
So if, so the 20th would be better.
Okay, that works for me. How about you, Cheryl?
I'll still be calling in.
Okay, that's fine. Is that okay, July 20th? Okay, July 20th it is. And then how about August 12th?
August 12th.
Are we all still good for August 12th?
I, we're still gonna do virtual, right?
We can do virtual in August.
Yeah. I'm on vacation the 12th.
Okay.
Depending upon the agenda, you know, if it's virtual, I can tune in.
Yep. Okay, and that's what we shall do. All right, so next is approval of minutes. And I confess, I haven't read the minutes for the 24th, but I am good for May 27th and June 10th. Did Cheryl get a chance to look at those? Okay, we'll, we'll do it next time.
I forgot to.
That's okay.
I'll make a note for myself right now.
And we are gonna save our staff update for later when Tim can join us. When we have staff. When we have staff other than Julia. And we're gonna do Citizen Speak next, but I just wanted to quickly run through. We have a public hearing on 440 Granite Ave, so those who are here for that could stay and, and do their comments then. And then we're gonna talk about zoning proposals for the, um, the 111 Highland Avenue, Highland Street Memory Clinic. We're gonna talk about other, you know, other items too. So, did anybody want to speak from Citizen Speak? Mr. Dolly, come on up. Thank you.
Sit.
Thank you, please do.
Is that how we do this?
Yes, yes, we do.
You've forgotten.
Thank you. My name is Jack Dolly. I'm the President and CEO of Northland Residential. On June 10th, during a matter in which the board was considering a, the age restriction language for the Walcott Wood project, I lost my cool. I've practiced before planning boards, zoning boards, conservation commissions, you name it, since I think I was 17. I've heard a lot of things and experienced a lot of things over that tenure. And I let the discourse of that night and the nights that preceded it over what was the appropriate interpretation of the bylaw and/or the special permit, what was intended, what was represented, what was appropriate, I let that get to me. And I lost my cool. I owe the Chair, Madam Chair, you an apology. But I also owe each member of this board my sincerest apologies for behaving in the way I did. It's out of character, I'm embarrassed by it. And I didn't want to let the moment sit and fester in your minds any more than it was sitting and festering in mine. So with this being the first opportunity to actually do something in person, which is, you know, we all sort of relish that we could do things without having to commute and all this other kind of stuff. It's actually better. So thank you for hearing me. Again, my apologies to you, Madam Chair, and to each member of you. And I would, I would ask that you consider it in the manner in which it's delivered. Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Dolly, I, I am very grateful for your efforts to come all the way in to do that in person. As I said that night, I think the reason that our temperatures went up so high is because we all cared so much, and that includes you. I know you care very much about your product. And like I said at the time, that's what I really want to remember all of our years spent together on the Carberry Walcott project. So I very much appreciate your efforts tonight, so thank you.
Agreed, and woodmere, and hopefully.
Of course.
And hopefully ours.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Rich.
No, I, I, because I was obviously very vocal on the call. You know, I've, I don't know you personally, but I've sat with you on many occasions on the Lauren Committee and the Planning Board. And I just want, you know, I mean, I, even hanging up on the call, I didn't hold any ill will to you personally. I'm, I feel the same way Denny does. I say this a lot at work, temperatures, temperatures go up because we're all passionate about things and, you know. So I appreciate that you took time out of your day to come here and say that. So for me, I appreciate that, and I've always had good experience working with you, so don't, you know.
Well, I, I hope the moment doesn't spoil the overall impression of, of my firm, our work, or myself as an individual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so is it 7:05? All right, so we are, oh, we're good, everything's flowing just right. Anybody else for Citizen Speak? Okay, we are going to go into our first public hearing on 440 Granite Avenue, which is a site. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, okay. Oh, he adjusted. Okay, so we can begin our 440 Granite Avenue Site Plan Approval. Would anyone like to speak to this before we bring the applicant up before us?
No.
Okay.
Ready for them.
Come on up.
440?
Yeah, 440 Granite Avenue.
It's nice to see you all in person.
Yes.
Yes, it sure is.
I don't know when the last time I wore a college shirt was though.
I had a meeting today, so I had, I put the skirt on for that, so, not for it.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please feel free to introduce yourself.
Thank you. I'm Mary Ann McHattick. I represent the applicants for the development proposal, the site plan approval process for, for 440 Granite Avenue. And with me tonight are Michael Moore, these are, he's the developer, one of the developers. Ellen Anseloni on my left, Tony Shao. These, these are architects from Feingold Alexander. You've, you've heard us before and seen us, but you haven't seen us in person. So thank you very much for having an in-person meeting. Tonight, we're following up, our last meeting was on June 10th. And we were, we decided that we would not meet with you on the 23rd because our presentation wasn't quite ready. And that was a good idea because we were able to finish certain parts of this, of what we're going to show you tonight. But we are following up on what you talked about on June 10th. So first of all, we're going to focus briefly on discussing the project's sustainability. We've, we've worked on some finer points, and we feel that's an important part of the project. We're going to explain in a little bit more tonight how we arrived at the massing design for this project. Where there, there's height on Granite Ave, and then there are, there's a much lower structure next to the residential buildings on the residential street. And then after we talk about that, we're going to focus particularly on the streetscape design. You asked us to give us, to give you more final drawings and more details, more trees, more interesting features for the streetscape, and I hope you like what we've come up with. So that's part of what we're showing you tonight. And then in addition to that, there's been a lot of talk about the design. I know this is site plan review, but we're going to the Board of Appeals, hopefully. And, and so design will be a matter for discussion, and it's very important to all of us. So we're, we've worked on facade design and certain, you know, trying to tweak aspects of the facade on all sides of the building. I hope you, you find the designs that we've come up with interesting. This is an architect's job, not mine. But they, you know, I think we've made progress, and I hope that you agree, but we, we're here to discuss it with you. So finally, I did give you, I, I gave you a little written update on what we've done since the last meeting. I'm not gonna go through that in detail, but just to quickly recap, Michael Moore has met with Verizon and N Star, and they are preparing work orders for putting lines under the street. We don't know what the cost will be. And in, in a project like this, the developer assumes the cost if it gets done. And, but the work is done by the unions that, that work with N Star and Verizon. So we don't have any control over cost, and we can't commit to this until we know the cost and see if it's possible to incorporate it. But I think it's progress, at least in my view, that both organizations have said that they would, would prepare work orders. So they're interested in working with us on this. And then we had a second visit to a parking facility. We still have some members of the Planning Board that haven't been able to visit, so we'll see what we can do, if it's possible to do that at another time. I think each time we do it, it's quite interesting for, for those who haven't seen how this works before. And I'm, I'm pretty available, so if there's a way to arrange another visit, I'm happy to, to meet you there and to explain. If we can get into the facility, then we can show you how it works. So finally, my comments are just generally, I'm just, I'm, I would ask you to keep in mind that this is a very challenging site. And, and it's a very odd lot, unusually shaped lot overlooking the expressways in the business district, but it, it backs up into a residential area. So this has been quite challenging to come up with a design for this site. I think it's an interesting design. I realize it's a different kind of design for everyone. And I, I think we want to, we want it to be as good as it possibly can be. It, it, it's a unique site. It needs a different and unique kind of design. I will say the project will revitalize this corner of the business district, and it will increase the town's tax revenues by approximately $300,000 a year, which is a, that's a pretty substantial project for Milton. So those are, those are some of the pluses. I know we have a lot of work to do in terms of convincing all of you. And I hope you'll ask us a lot of questions, but I'm gonna turn the presentation over, I guess, to Ellen.
Yeah, I'll just say a couple of words. We just, thanks for having us back again. I just wanted to say we heard you last time. We listened. We went back and, you know, put our heads together with Michael and his team and have made some improvements, we think. And Tony's gonna take us through them. So we have them on boards and as well as electronic. I don't know how you prefer it. We, the, the boards are pretty nice. We can, we can do it from there. It's up to you how you would prefer us to do it.
Do, do we have a preference?
Well, we have to do the electronic for the.
Let's do it, let's do it electronic then.
Yeah, and then, but we have the.
Oh, that's true, right.
Just one.
But we have the boards, and if anybody, I mean, if you want to bring them closer to you or have us flip the pages.
Or hand them around, the other thing, because we have, you're correct, Tony, we have more slides than we have boards. We printed out the renderings and the plans.
I just have a question with the visiting of the facility.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Just a question.
Is there any way, because I haven't gone yet, but the times just haven't worked out.
Sure.
Is there any way to get, so usually during the week is tough, right? I'll have to do jobs, but if it's early during the week, I can do it, or if it's late during the week.
To the parking facility, yeah, and I'll bet everybody's times are different. That's why this is hard to do.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe if you could throw a few times.
So you would, you would prefer early or late?
Yeah.
And.
Rich, why don't you tell us the time that works and we'll make it work?
You, you suggest two times.
Between eight and 10 in the morning any day is probably pretty good for me. It's when the West Coast starts waking up, that's when I get busy, so.
Yeah, I, I could, I could join in between eight and 10. Yeah, I could do that.
Okay, so let's see if we can come up with a, a time or two. I'll send the information to you.
I have access notes.
Okay, so you can do it, you can do it. Do you want to set a day?
Sure.
You want to say what day you want to do it? Why don't you look at your schedule?
Next week, I can't do this week, but.
No, next week, yeah, not this week.
This week's over.
Like toward the end, like 15 or 16, like the, the Friday.
It's not, it's not a large time commitment either, once you're there.
In both days, I'm pretty free all morning.
Okay.
All morning.
How about Thursday, the 15th?
Sure, say nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock?
That works for me. I'll put it right in.
That's great.
Yeah, if you can send something out, I'll put it in there for now.
We'll send a reminder, we'll send it out back to, out to the board.
Yeah.
Anyone wants to come back again, again.
Thank you so much.
It's worth a trip, for sure.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, well, thank you. I really appreciate you coming up with some times because it's tough to figure out how to do this.
Yeah.
Definitely.
I, Tony, do you want to just launch into it? Thank you. And, and this is the update, so there's a couple more slides in here than what you guys received before. So we have a couple of more renderings to be added.
Do you have a mic? Does he need a mic?
Yes, he does.
Oh, yeah, if you could bring one of yours, any, anyone of those.
Okay.
Decided to get scuff.
Did you say nine o'clock for that, for that tour?
We'll guess. We'll guess.
Thursday, the 15th.
Yes, in that building? Oh, in this building, right, sorry. He's gonna go into it, Rich.
Okay, is this working? Can everyone hear? Okay, thank you. And again, thank you very much also for allowing us to present to you today. And it is delightful to be in person. The traffic, surprisingly, wasn't as bad as I expected, so maybe that's a blessing. Let's hope so. So I think what we're gonna do today is we're gonna run through some of the things that we advanced as Ellen and Mary Ann said, and we're gonna share with you where the design has evolved a little bit. But before we do that, I'm gonna point out a few key things that I think really speaks to also one of the driving forces behind the project on a sustainability side. I think we really feel this is really significant, and I think that there's some things that we want to just emphasize as, as to what we believe this project will bring forth. So I'm just gonna, you know, sort of describe these things. But one of the most significant things is that this is gonna be an all-electric sourced building. So we are really trying to look at this as a really important step in moving towards a more sustainable development. And I think it will be probably one of the first or initial ones that are occurring of this magnitude and this size in this location and probably in this community. So I think for a multifamily development, I think that's a really strong statement that the client is putting forth. We are gonna develop the photovoltaics on the roof. We're gonna try to maximize the advantage of that to also help with respect to energy use and demand for the project. We're gonna provide in not only the efficient automated parking system that we described that several of you now are gonna range to see, but in so doing, that system also is much more, in some ways, sustainable because the cars, once they're in it, are not driving around. So it's a much more compact, it's a much more sustainable way to park vehicles. And with respect to the vehicle parking itself, there's the capacity to create electrical charging stations in this automated system as many as we want. So there's an initial amount that will be provided. And then if it turns out that more and more vehicles or people who live here end up having EV vehicles, that ability to transform those parking spaces for EV is certainly capable embedded in the system itself. We also think that the other part of it is we're gonna be looking at high-performance thermal envelope and highly efficient mechanical systems. In part, this is driven as well because of the location being on Granite Avenue. We actually have to do a lot more in terms of the construction, in terms of the window, and some of the, you know, insulation to actually address some of the busyness and the acoustic properties that exist. So that in turn also enhances the performance and energy development of the project itself just in response to even that issue alone. We're also gonna be developing a series of green roof elements on the second level. This will reduce the heat island effect as we're trying to reduce the amount of, you know, climate impact. And as a result of that, that also absorbs stormwater runoff, which also helps in terms of water mitigation. So these things are important steps in the way the building can help. We're providing, you know, fairly substantial bike storage facilities within the building. We think also this is really important statement, but it's also important in terms of how people use and the owners will come to expect in the building like this. So that will be something that will be provided at a fairly sizable amount in terms of the bike storage for the residents themselves. We're going to be exploring all the degree of sustainable materials throughout the project. We're really looking carefully at the selection of materials that we are proposing. And I think this is really important, that we really emphasize trying to do with recycled content and everything we can is also having climate and carbon impact as far as the materials we specify for the project. And then we will also look at the idea of harvesting the rainwater runoff to therefore help it for plant watering on the project site itself. So we're gonna be looking at these strategies to really help the project in some ways. Try to be a really good neighbor, but also try to be an important statement about helping to look forward and the importance of looking forward in a development like this towards the future as we're all dealing, of course, with the climatic, substantial climate issue. So I just want to restate some of the important steps that we are putting forth on this project.
Excuse me, Denny, a question on this, on topic. Have you taken a look at what this might do in terms of lead, gone through the lead checklist? Would this be at lead certifiable, lead silver, lead gold?
So I think we are evaluating that, Cheryl. With respect to what the, what the actual commitment in terms of the end result of that, I think we're not yet certain what we can state about that. I think that also the, some of the things that, as you know, there are things that are important in lead, but there are also other things that are important with respect to other factors. So I think we're, we are clearly looking at that, but I think we, we're not at this point yet able to say what that, you know, amount would be or if, where we are with respect to that. But we're certainly aware of what the checklist items are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we can, is there any, any additional questions on this?
No.
I did have a question on the photovoltaics on the roof. Does that provide, what, what amount of electricity will that provide the building?
I think we have a definitive quantity yet.
I don't have it off the top of my head, but we can share that with you. We'll send it to Tim. We've had, had it analyzed by our engineers.
And. I think in dollar amounts, if it's 20,000.
20,000, okay.
It would be fed back into the, in a year.
Denny, if you don't mind, I'll ask another question. I'm familiar with why it's important to move towards all electric buildings. Certainly, Rich is clear, but maybe even for the listening audience, if you could explain why that's an important strategy?
Right, so the reliance, as we know, on fossil fuels is contributing to climate change. And it's impacting the development of ozone, other things. And so the less we depend on fossil fuels in the project, or any building for that matter, the more it contributes positively, or as we say, contributes less negatively towards environmental impact. So as we move away from fossil fuels and the ability to do that, I think this, this is really, really moving towards both renewables, but also doing an energy source that is a lot cleaner and has a lot less impact on the environment. And these are things that contribute to climate impact. And buildings are one of the biggest sources of climate impact. So the more we as buildings, as owners, as developers, as architects can help, I think that's really our, our responsibility. And I think we're, we're proud to be able to say that we're trying to do the best we can with respect to those issues.
And I will say that at the, at the, my understanding is at this time, it's more expensive to go this route.
That's correct.
However, it does provide an opportunity as the power, the providers of power, right, green their systems, so if they get more wind, they get, you know, more clean energy, that benefit comes directly through the electric power grid, right? So directly to, so you don't have to convert.
Well, and they also have photovoltaics on the roof that's sort of charging back in.
Yes.
You know, get that from your oil burner.
Right, and you don't have to convert from gas down the road, you know, to something cleaner because you've already built it in that you're going to get it from the source, the provider, as well as the panels, for sure. But my, my guess would be net zero would be pretty tough to get in multifamily.
That's probably a little bit of a reach at this point, but who knows in the future? We're always, we're always striving. Any other questions? Okay, I think we'll flip to the next image. So I think we're gonna come back to this. This is a question that I think had come to us, which is, you know, why, why the massing in this particular way? In the way that we've described the project and positioned it, the way it has moved forward. So I'm gonna try to go through a series of things because we actually did study a range of options early on in trying to figure out how to plan the project, but also look at the impact from the massing standpoint, in particular, as it relates to the neighborhood that it butts at on Mechanic and behind. So this image, I think we had seen before, but I'm just gonna try to go through it again. So starting with the upper left, the as-of-right with a special permit could conceivably get up to 65 feet and occupy the entire site. So that stratagem, in terms of this view, this is just an abstract view taking along Mechanic Street, but here you can see, you know, the impact of a project of this magnitude, of this size, occupying the full site. The as-of-right scheme, which is at 45 feet, also shows on the right-hand side what happens here. It is lower, but it is also filling the entire site and coming up to the full 45 feet or four stories in height in terms of its massing here. And then what we've shown here, again, in the abstract, is pushing the building up to five stories along Granite to 64 feet, but really pushing most of the bulk away from the residential neighborhood and loading it towards Granite Avenue. And that diagram on the lower right really illustrates the difference. So the as-of-right scheme, as you can see in the kind of orange triangle, that's actually how much site it could conceivably occupy in the full buildout at, at least 45 feet, or with a special permit up to 65 feet. And then at the lower right is how the mass, massing has been adjusted and substantially pushed away from the residence towards the front. But I'm gonna also show you some other schemes that we also looked at even prior to this. So I think we go next. So here you see, taken from a different perspective, it's kind of a bird's eye aerial view. This shows what happens in the massing with the Granite Street here, Mechanic here, filling the site at 65 feet in height in terms of the special permit. Next.
And is that also, sorry, showing the shadow impact as well?
Yes, it is. This is, of course, this is taking it one particular time at that stage. But yes, what you're seeing here is the impact at a particular time showing on there. But I think this is more from the massing standpoint what we're illustrating. Next. We also looked at an idea that said, well, what happens if you notch? We also looked at an idea that said, well, what happens if you notch the building, actually carve it away and start to open up towards Granite and create a, you know, in some ways, this is a more viable footprint for residential. The other scheme really is, is too fat. But this shows you what happens if you start to deal with real residential width and begin to carve this way. But this clearly shows the, the challenge of pushing the bulk and mass towards mechanic and towards the residence. So I think this is something we rejected. Next. We tried a different diagram that flipped it the other way, but we still face with the challenge of looking at the, the impact along mechanic street. And we're just simply flipping the notching area cutouts in other parts of the site as shown in this diagram, but still the bulk of the mass occupies Granite and mechanic in this location. Next. And here we try to look at the other way to try to carve a little bit more space along mechanic street to begin to open up this side and create more of a courtyard. And we began to see some promise emerging in this particular diagram, at least, where it said, okay, we're starting to suggest the massing is starting to pull away from mechanic. It still occupies a pretty substantive part, but it's starting to have, you know, less impact on the residence and thrusting more impact along Granite Ave as we begin to study this particular massing diagram. Next. And then we should, we looked at, again, the, the original scheme, but now lowered to 45 feet in height. And of course, the height, you know, is lessened. And so the impact visually is, is, is not as substantive as the 65, but it still, you know, represents a large bulk and a large mass along the entire block. Next. And then we began to say, okay, what we really want to do is in order to try to balance these factors, it's saying, you know, if we can push the height towards Granite Avenue and begin to carve away elements along the back, that, I think, really starts to help the massing, at least in terms of its overall strategy. Next. And so we said, okay, we, we begin to remove massing away because we really want to try to lower more of it towards the back, again, in the effort to push more of it towards the front. Next. And then as we get to where we are more today, what we've looked at, it says, well, not only do we push massing there, but we're going to even lower it further. And so we're going to try to scale the backside down even lower and step it down and also begin to introduce ideas of green elements, roofscape, starting to scale it back and look at ways to do more and more to begin to carve. And then we also begin to carve out the mass itself to begin to break the scale down so that it's not just one simple block, but in some ways, what we, by introducing these notches, we're starting to break the mass down as well in terms of its overall effect. So those are things that begin to carve away at the overall project. Next. So I think if there's any questions about that, that was the, that was literally the series of steps. And, you know, there are many schemes we as architects with our clients look at in terms of massing and strategizing about different ways in trying to really explore different options. But I think that gives you at least a little bit of sense of what we went through in looking at different ways to position this project on this site. So I'm going to, I think we'll hold here for a second and, because I think what I want to talk to here, if there's any questions about what I went through? Okay, if not, this next series of images is going to talk more about the landscape and things that we have tweaked since the last time we met. So this plan, I know if it's, if it's hard to see, we can certainly pass around the board, which is the same drawing here. So there's a couple of things that I want to point out that we have impacted on this, on the design. So we began by adding several more trees, both along mechanic street and along Granite Street. So we basically flushed out more trees. I think this was asked of us to see if there's way we could enhance more green. So we've added, you know, a tree here, another tree here. And so that's expanded the amount of treescape along both streets as a result of trying to respond to the comments that we heard at the last hearing. The other things that we've also looked at here is trying to enhance more green at the edges and other parts of the building. So I'm going to part, start by the corner, I think we described before. We're exploring this idea of a green landscape element. It could also be not just a flowering or landscape element, but it could also be a seat element, too, depending on how it's designed. So we feel that that is an important thing to signify a scale issue at the corner of mechanics and Granite Ave, as is shown here. We've also done several things as well in exploring some ideas that also were raised here, which is in the recess niches that we just described. We're also looking to create landscape opportunities here. So these could be low planter things. They're, you know, sort of built into the, into those recesses, but they allow plants to grow. So we think that also will contribute on the sidewalk and streetscape to begin to introduce the landscape elements here. They could also frame entrance to retail tenants as well. Furthermore, we've also enhanced more, more, you know, buffers. We've introduced more of the verticals like arborvitae along this corner here to begin to screen that particular edge. And we've already had that previously at this particular side, the location of those elements along this edge of the site adjacent to that property. But we also furthermore, with respect to the transformer, we, we really tried to do as much landscape around it. So before, previously, we had shown this all as hardscape. Now we're actually proposing to create greenscape around the transformer to the greatest extent possible. And really, one only needs to have the transformer on the pad in order to do this, and we can surround planting around it. So I think this will soften also that particular aspect. And I think that last time we also mentioned, previously, we had three curb cuts along mechanic street. So we eliminated two of them and reduced it down to, well, excuse me, we, we reduced one, which previously was shown here for loading and receiving. We've eliminated that. And of course, this is where the parking garage access comes in here. And then we have these four dedicated surface parking spaces here, which at the moment was one of the questions that was also raised. I think the other, other things that I will just simply point out is that when we look at the overall picture, the attempt to try to really deal with the streetscape edges and the elements that occur on the locals, portions that plant and introduce different scaling elements. And then the last thing I'm going to point out, which we do have in the rendering, so the other thing that we've explored here is at the edge of both Granite and along mechanic, which is to create a brick strip. We know this exists in East Milton, and we've seen, you know, the development to introduce a scaling device. So we believe by introducing that, that idea, which extends to the East Milton Business District, and we, we thought that was a really attractive idea. We want to pull this forward into here. So along most of the edges here and here is to introduce brick to further break down the scale of the sidewalk as one imagines the edges here. And then, of course, I will point out again that when we have proposed this design, we've eliminated three curb cuts here along Granite, and that's enabled us to add several cars as a result to be able to park as well as for service and loading and unloading. So I think from a plan standpoint, these are some of the changes, but some of this may be more evident in some of the perspective views as well.
I'm sorry. I, I wasn't sure I understood. So is the brick on the ground or in the building?
It's on the ground. So it's on the, it's on the sidewalk strip edge. It's approximately two feet or so in width. It's something that we observed in the East Milton.
We just had it put in in front of the, you know, the Brugal, the, the block where the real estate offices are and, and the liquor store. It's just been put in in the last, you know, three or four months. His new sidewalk, wider sidewalk with the brick strip.
They didn't, they didn't put the bricks in.
Unfortunately, they tore out brick and never put it back.
But they do have bricks still on Adam Street. So that's what we're hoping that it comes back on Granite and then we can connect it.
Connecting on Elliott Street, connecting the business district. Yeah, that's excellent. Does it connect onto mechanic? Does it wrap onto mechanic on the side?
There is, there's a break here because this will be a handicap accessible ramp, which is shown here for crosswalk. So of course, we won't have brick where the crosswalk comes in from the handicap. But once it comes up to, to that handicap, then yes, from there forward, and therefore it's brick.
And then on mechanic, it's?
And mechanic as well, yes. Including all the way essentially through the edge of our property as well as in front of the transformer. So essentially, this whole, as which we are going to redo sidewalk, we'll introduce the brick on both sides.
I got a question.
Please.
From mechanic to granite on the other part of that triangle, the green?
Just this corner?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So straight up that green path? Is that a path or is that just?
At the moment, it's, it's described as a landscape as there is a path that expansively occurs here. This is for the egress out of the garage, which comes about this, this halfway down the building. And the rest of it is intended to be a greenscape all the way from here to here.
Should you walk through there?
That's a question. Right now, it isn't proposed that way. I know this was some question raised, but at the moment, we're not proposing a walkway that connects all the way through. It really only connects insofar as servicing the building egress. But beyond that, no. Any other questions?
I have one. I think I suggested eliminating one of the curb cuts that was just for service. So now, can you just explain, I think the only service that you're anticipating, at least at this end, is probably trash pickup. Otherwise, you're anticipating the commercial is going to be small vehicles at the front using those service spots. Is that correct?
Yes.
So what's the anticipation for a building of this size? A trash pickup would be like twice a week?
Twice a week, yes.
And would that be carts rolled out through that garage opening?
They'd be, yeah, rolled out to the garage. Well, there's actually an opening on the sidewalk. We have designed some doors.
Just through the doors, then?
There's a door.
Okay.
There's a door, Sarah.
And so that would just be brought out?
Yeah, there'd be four yard bins.
Okay. I just want, again, for people to understand that because East Milton experiences a fair amount of service challenges, I know. I, I know these two know better than I, but I've heard plenty of comments about it. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, again, for the folks listening or here, you know, watching, that they understand that component.
Thank you.
These service spots in front, that would be for the residents if they need to talk to Verizon or they need a plumber?
Yeah. I think we're, we're really allocating, you know, certain spots here for things like that or deliveries or things that might be like takeoff, you know? So there's some parts that we're just simply stating that that's the only area along Granite which could serve in that function. So it's not taking the whole street and parking. So we're trying to maximize the parking on the street. But some of these spots, as a result of, you know, the day, day operations of a building once on occasion might, might require that. So that's a particular service zone. And then, you know, all these things about hours of operation and all of that comes into play, and that's a, that's a further discussion.
So are you, I'm sorry. Just one, one last thing quickly. If you don't mind?
No, I go, yeah.
Okay. Those parking spaces, do you, I think I had, we had a preview of a set of slide deck, and you have another plan that's going to show if those aren't there?
That's correct.
All right. Because it is a concern about having parking spaces where you back into the travel lane to get out of the parking space. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood it correctly, that you have an alternative to that.
We do. I, I think this is a question that was raised here in, in terms of the decision about whether to want to have the parking space or not have the parking spaces. At the moment, there are four spaces that are shown, and they are pulled in off of mechanic that, that are designated here. And I think the next plan actually that pops up may have this alternate. Is any further questions on this? But yes, Meredith?
I did have one. Another way that I've seen just sort of connecting communities and business districts is with lighting. And I know on, on 131, not 131, but on Elliott Street, that when they did that project, not 131, but the previous Elliott Street.
6. 136.
50 Elliott?
50 Elliott, yes. I'm sorry.
Milton Hill House?
Yeah, the Milton Hill House. They put historic lighting. And I know we worked on that with Central Avenue. And there is historic lighting in the, in East Milton Square and the lanterns. Would that be something that you would be able to consider?
Streetlights, you're talking?
Doing streetlights and doing?
If we can get the utility away, we're going to put new streetlights. But currently, there is streetlights on the utility pole.
Right, right.
But if, if, if we can get rid of the, the cables, we're definitely putting the new streetlights in. That would be the intent.
That would be really nice to connect with the rest of the, the East Milton Square. So that's great. Okay. Thank you.
Of course. Any, any other questions?
Well, related to that, are there streetlights currently on mechanic street?
Yes.
Yeah.
And are they of the more institutional looking type?
Yes.
Yes. So would those be something to replace then with this project as well?
Yes, because the, the cables, if they go on granite or go on a mechanic also, we're proposing to remove them.
Throw that a lot.
On both.
Okay. So it's, it's both streets, not just granite?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I think next slide.
Can I just ask a question?
Oh, yes, sorry.
On that slide before I forget.
Sure.
Along here, is that the area where it's usually six feet buffer, but you wanted to, but the applicant wanted a variance?
No.
That's not the area?
No, it's setback, we, we have the proper setback there.
Okay, that's the proper setback.
What happens on mechanic street is that the upper floor is somewhat.
Has a hangover.
Over.
It's a slight cantilever.
So we need a variance for the six-foot setback on mechanic street. Even though there are entrances on mechanic street, it's treated as a side and not a front entrance.
Okay.
And so, but the, the other side has six feet. And I mean, as far as the pathway goes, you know, we talked about it internally, but we honestly don't know whether people would want to have a walkway there. And it would be an ideal thing to develop with the adjacent property if the adjacent property wanted to participate in that. And, and the bank doesn't own that property, it's a, but the bank is a tenant. So I don't want you to think that we didn't talk about it, but we, you know, it could be that people don't like that idea.
Right. I would want to hear from mechanic street.
I think we'd be interested in knowing, that's all.
Yeah, I would be interested in hearing from the residents of mechanic street.
But there's not a path there now.
There's not a path there now.
There's not.
Putting in retail and you're looking for people to walk.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, no, yeah. I just, same thing, would like to hear from the neighbors.
Yeah, because they may, they may welcome strangers coming into their neighborhood or having easy access right into their neighborhood. Or they may, the, the residents of mechanic might prefer to walk around and not have that. I don't, I don't live there, so I don't know. But I'd be interested to hear from them.
I'll just point out that, that connectivity improvements was suggested in the Barrett Planning Report. And I, Rich, you were part of those meetings, maybe you recall discussions, since I wasn't there, I don't know what the discussion around those were. And also pocket green spaces, so that you have, Granite Avenue is probably one of the most inhospitable pedestrian environments that could ever exist. And so while, I've said this, I think, in previous meetings, while things today, we, we're planning a building for today, but we have to have an eye to the future on how we want the district to be over time in improvements. And sometimes things are ahead of what it is today, but in, in preparation for what will come. So I would certainly, at the very least, have it such that it could convert to a pedestrian connection at some point as the area continues some redevelopment. So rather than, you know, so maybe need to think about, again, those parking spaces and the arborvitae, if the arborvitae weren't there, and it could be something easily swapped out. You know, I know that there's the residential neighbor there, and that's, it's a lot kind of happening in that one corner. I should think that they would be happier with green space rather than parking spaces, and then leaving a path. And where the commercial, I think, is required four spaces, you're adding three to Granite Ave, plus the two service spaces. And this, we've already heard that this end of Granite Ave is not fully parked. When Tim went through the parking analysis, it's been, the three studies that have been done, showing that this is not fully parked most of the time at this end. So in my view, why not put the parking on Granite Ave and leave the butter on Mechanic to have some green space? So that's my two cents on that.
Yes, Rich.
Sorry, another question. Is there any, and I don't know what part, when you would do this, but is there any talk with the town about doing anything else on that street? Like, if you were to do that to the sidewalk, I'm sure that, maybe that could look really great, but I think the side, and I don't know, I'd have to hear from the neighbors, but I think the rest of the street needs some work for sidewalks and the street itself. So has the town made any commitments in there, or would they?
We talked to Mike Denny, there's nothing in the works.
Nothing?
But remember grant applications through MassWorks, I think MassWorks Grants is how it was done in other locations? And so, you know, usually the planning kind of is a good stepping stone to ask for the grants, because in the grant applications, you can refer to the planning recommendations. And so I think that's what happened in Central, you know, in Milton Village, connection over to Central, was it start, they started with some projects, and they've applied for the, like 36 Central, for example. And then they applied for the MassWorks Grants and got those. Or we, I should say we, not they.
No, that makes a lot of sense. It's just my thinking, though, is like, it's hard to imagine or vision without a drawing. And so if something can be done ahead of time to, you know, here's the vision for that.
Well, I think that's, that's my hope was going to come as a follow-up to the planning, to the Barrett Report. You know, we're going to continue on with not just zoning ideas, but public improvement, you know, public realm improvements. You know, I think there's a lot of interest in public realm improvements, while there's probably a lot of dialogue that continues to need to happen on specific projects. But public realm, I don't think too many people would be opposed to seeing parking on sidewalks removed, you know, so that you can create a better pedestrian environment, unless there's an inadequacy of parking. That should be addressed differently than putting cars on sidewalks and, from a public safety point of view.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, do you want to go to the next slide?
Okay, next. We haven't got to the, so just want to point out again, on the, on the second level of the top of the current parking area that's covered that we just described, it's a green roof. So this is what we described previously in some of the sustainable features, and so that will be developed as part of the overall strategy for this particular project with respect to the covered parking area. So here's the alternate option, is what happens if we don't have parking on Mechanic Street, and look at the idea of developing it more as a pocket park. So this is really at a conceptual level, please don't get too heavy into like the details, but you can see clearly what happens when we begin to transform this idea forward. And I think that the idea of if you don't require the cars, or decide that that is not a decision that you're balancing between vehicular versus pedestrian experience, this is what could result. So, you know, it's a fairly reasonable size area. It starts to, it starts to really, does change that corner in terms of how it feels, and then it reduces, of course, the curve cut now to one along Mechanic Street, which is simply accessing the garage and for the building itself. The rest of it is the same as the previous.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
So that, I mean, I like that, right? Makes it nicer looking than the cars, but my question would be is, if you're going to have retail, they got to park somewhere, are they going to be parking inside the building? Or is that only for residents?
This is for residence use. The parking that is reliant is on the street for the, for the retail tenants.
Yeah, so there, the tenants that are going to be working, they're either going to park right in the front, now you've lost your customer parking, or they're going to park illegally on Mechanic Street and anger the neighbors, so.
Yeah.
So the whole service zone parking issue.
Seventeen parking spots?
I don't remember the exact...
Is it seventeen parking spots you need for retail? These are my old notes, I had seventeen.
That's what you have in your international...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is in my presentation. I don't have it on top of the head. Let me just explain how I, how I analyzed it, I guess, which was that, and I believe the traffic engineer did the same thing. We looked at the existing parking on the site, and there's 2,500 square feet of retail existing on this site. There were also, I think, five residential units, counting the additional lot on Mechanic Street that was, that are now part of the site, used to be part of the site years ago as well. And so what we were, what we're doing is we're adding 1,500 square feet of retail. There were only about, there were possibly three parking spaces on the site. The basically, people who use these retail uses now, or used to use Dave's by Confermory, they didn't park on the site, they parked in front, or wherever, you know, wherever they could, right around the corner. So we're, we are by closing off all of the entrances on Granite Ave, we're adding, we're making available three additional parking spaces for regular parking, retail parking, whatever. They're public parking spaces available to everyone. We're also creating a double space for deliveries, so, and designating that as the place where deliveries have to be and pickups have to occur, so they're not going to be occurring on Mechanic Street. The three spaces, according to our current guidelines, which are one space for every 250 square feet of retail.
I'm sorry, this is my husband, he's delivering my notes that I forgot.
My shoes are squeaking, so you can...
Thank you. Sorry.
So when you have three spaces, you have, you've basically accommodated 750 square feet of retail, or whatever type of space you're creating. Other than restaurant, that's a different standard. We can't meet those standards. Right now, this site doesn't even come close to meeting those standards. And most of East Milton Square doesn't have off-street parking to meet those standards. So the reality is that most sites in East Milton Square can't meet that, and that's probably the biggest obstacle to doing major commercial development in East Milton Square, except for the Fruit Center, there isn't a big parking lot. And we know there are parking spaces available, we've had three studies done, we know some of them are vacant. So there's some flexibility, but that's a, that's it based on current use. So what we're doing is, in this new development, we're creating three commercial spaces. And the formula that's in our parking, in our zoning, we couldn't meet. It's simply impossible. So that, what will happen here is, it's one of the variances that we would have to look for from the Board of Appeals, and the input from the planning board is very important. And that's why the rear parking, even though it's only four spaces, is very attractive as a pocket park. But it's a, it's a decision that you need to ponder, because is it better to not have those spaces and to rely on on-street parking for the commercial? And we want to keep some commercial here, because this is the business district, and we don't want to eliminate what we already have. We have so little in Milton, so that's why. And also because it makes for a richer, better experience if you have this type of mixed use. You have interesting small retail that will serve people in the building and people who live nearby. You don't get rid of it, you don't just have all residential. But you have to think about how to do the parking. The mechanized, the automated parking works very well for residential. It does not work well, it's not a good system for commercial, because it needs to be private, it needs to be safe, it needs to be accessible only to the residents in the building, as far as I know, right now at least, that's the way most buildings are used.
Well, you wouldn't want to do that anyway, because people that are using the retail are going to be there for an hour. And you know, what you're really looking at for those systems is somebody that's pulling in and staying there for eight hours, not coming out every 15 minutes. I mean, that would be just...
What about staff, though, that might be working an eight-hour day?
Well, it's for the residents. I mean, I think that, you know, my experience of doing mixed-use condominiums is that you tend not to, not to have the residential and the commercial sharing the same parking. You keep the residences and their parking system separate, and you have some other arrangement for the commercial spaces. You don't really want, the residents don't like it to mix, and the commercial people don't either. That's my experience.
As far as stackers, I'm sorry, Kathleen, were you done?
Yes.
Sorry, stackers go, Milton Marketplace came before us for site plan approval a couple of years ago to add stackers to their parking lot.
And the ZBA approved it.
Right. And so we looked at that, and it's one of these kind of joint things, too, where it was ZBA and Planning Board. And they were anticipating that people would come and park there for their, you know, their full shift. And so from, I'm not arguing the commercial and sharing residential, but just the idea that, about using it from a commercial basis, I do think that they are being considered and being used. Milton Marketplace didn't put them in, and they never came back and told us why they haven't, but anyway, I just wanted to point that out.
But I also wanted to follow up on something that Marianne said. Actually, Tim Churwinski, our town planner, pointed out that parking with this pocket park as pictured, the cars would have to back out onto Mechanic Street.
Correct.
And that's, that's a problem. So I don't think we can allow that.
I know, I back out in my driveway.
I know, but I don't think we can approve something that's not safe.
Well, I mean, if you look at East Milton, and most of the houses in East Milton, almost all of us are backing out of our parking, out of our driveways into the street. And the whole strip-by fitness you're pulling up to Granite Ave.
Which has been, which has been actually reducing the numbers because of safety concerns there.
I, I mean, these things may have been approved in the past, but I think that we know better now.
No, we have a zoning bylaw that has a parking section, Section 7. And it's, the regulations apply to parking over a certain size. So what we have here is, we have automated parking for...
Forty-one cars?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight cars. And we have this small four-car parking space in the back that's on the ground. But our parking bylaw, which doesn't, it simply does not, it doesn't work for this style of parking, treats this all as one parking area. And so the parking regulations apply to that four lot, lot. If you created a lot for four spaces, those regulations wouldn't apply. I'm not saying that it isn't a good idea to not have to back into the street, but I'm also saying, and I thought of the same thing when we looked at this, all up and down the street, you have people with driveways who are backing out, or, you know, driving in and backing out, or turning around, whatever. Many driveways don't have room to turn around in the driveway. It's something we do do all the time. You'd like to design not to have to do it. You'd need a bigger parking space, we don't have it. So what we did was we created four spaces this way and said, is it better than not having them? And it doesn't, the whole parking scheme does not fit with Milton's Section 7 zoning for larger parking areas. And, and so we're creating something different here again with the parking. I think these are considerations, how you have to get in and out of the space is a consideration, safety's a consideration. No doubt, the Board of Appeals is going to be concerned about those things. They will benefit from any input they get from the planning board. So it is sort of, it's kind of part of site plan approval, but the Board of Appeals has to approve a variance for the parking design.
What I would...
Might just ask a quick question. How many variances are you asking for?
Well, we need a mixed, variance because it's mixed use. The zoning does not allow for mixed use. We need a variant, we need, we need a special permit because it's a five-story building in a commercial district. But the building commissioner treats the entrance covering for the stairwell, and also the enclosure, if you want to put an enclosure around mechanicals on the roof, he treats that as part of the roof. That brings the roof height up to sixty, seventy-one feet, over the 65, which is the actual rooftop and the top of the five stories. So we need a variance for that. So technically, we need a height variance, we need a mixed-use variance, and there's the side setback on the right on Mechanic Street that's, that needs a variance, because it's not six feet in the upper levels.
Because my question is...
There are multiple variances.
Yeah, right. So my question, I guess, is on the timing of this. I mean, normally, when you have site plan approval, you know, you've already got the zoning in place, and you're just looking for the site plan. So...
Why are we doing it this way?
Well, I'm trying to think about, I mean, I know that when I was on the zoning board, that there were several, you know, applications that came before the ZBA, like the parking for the Fruit Center, that had a site plan approval component, has a planning board approval as well. But it seems to me that we can't issue our site plan approval until you've got the variances from the ZBA.
You will have to, you would have to either say, we're ready to issue site plan approval, but it would be conditioned on, you know, you can do it in various ways. You don't actually issue it, but you say, we're ready to do it, we've gone through everything we care about, this is how we think it should be designed. But this is conditioned on you receiving the variances, of course. Because this project won't go forward without...
I mean, I'm just trying to think about, and just...
The Board of Appeals does the exact same thing.
Right.
Because when I've done this, I've done this several times, it's in an iterative process. Usually, it's parallel, and both boards say, we're not going to approve till the other one does. So they end up writing, if they do write a decision, they write a decision with a condition that says, if it's Board of Appeals first, this is contingent on approval of the site plan.
Well, I think it has to be Board of Appeals first, personally.
Yes, and I agree with you, but the reason we're here before you is that this is an unusual site plan and an unusual design. And I, the Board of Appeals needs the input, needs to know how the planning board looks at this project. And we need the feedback that we can get in this process. That's why we're, the other reason from a practical standpoint is that the Board of Appeals is extremely backed up. I mean, I have, I have applications that were, that were filed in February that don't have hearing dates yet. So we're not going to get anything, any, any feed, we're not going to get a decision from the Board of Appeals for many months. And meanwhile, we would like to be back at this stage to know whether this is a fruitful project to continue with. And I think you've already given us a lot of very useful feedback. And you've already pointed out, there are obviously issues with variances that are required. Are you going to write zo, so let me back up a little bit and say, this is one of the things we looked at when this project came, at least for me to look at it, was, are we going to ask the planning board to try to write zoning, or new zoning, for the East Milton Business District for this site? And the answer is, not really. Because, yes, of course, if you're writing new zoning for the business district, we should be looking at it, and we should be trying to be consistent with it. But it's not written yet, it's at the discussion stage, and we've been following that pretty carefully. And with this project, we've been trying to be pretty close to the recommendations coming out of that process so far. But this is a really odd site, because it's at a corner, it faces the canyon part of the expressway, there's no deck in front of this. This particular site has a much more challenging problem in terms of the traffic and noise from the expressway, the pollution from the expressway, and so on and so forth. So to do anything useful on this site, you're probably going to need a fairly unique design. And when you try to write zoning for a very unique site, you, you would end up writing zoning that might not be right for the whole business district. So in this case, I feel this is, this is an opportunity to go through the process this way, with the planning board for the site plan, with the Board of Appeals for the variance, for the, for the relief required from zoning. And in that process, to learn more about what's really acceptable and what, how far, you know, what can we do with some of these locations in East Milton Square to make them better, to make them viable as, as development sites, without overwhelming what we have, which is very unusual. You know, some of the residential historic, all of those aspects of Milton that are surrounding this particular site. So that's how we decided to go at it this way. That's the reason. We're hoping to learn from this.
I think we can appreciate that. I just wanted to let you finish your presentation, if you, if you would like. I don't know where we are.
We're probably about a little bit more than halfway through, but I can, I can move fairly quickly to the next, to the next, to the question. Shall we go forward?
Is that okay? Did you want?
No, I'll wait, we're only halfway, yeah.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay. And then the same thing is in this particular, at the pocket park, we still have the green roof portion on that part of the building, which allows it to also extend to this series. Next.
And then these, I think you had seen before, but the ideas that we're proposing, plans that I think, one, we believe will be attractive and really try to enhance a landscaping idea, a combination of sort of more decorative trees, ideas of the green roofs, ideas of arborvitae's, vines, if we can, to grow on parts of the vertical elements. So these things, more of the landscape can really address, but this is sort of the, at least, initial thoughts with respect to some of the planting and landscape treatment. Next. Okay, so now, these last series of images are going to really respond to more of the development of the exterior design, and some of the things that we've done in response to what we heard, as well as our own thinking. So one of the things I know that we discussed is the ability to try to think, there are ways to sort of make the building in some ways warmer and perhaps more scalable in terms of details. So we started to introduce some things here. One of the first things that we began to look at more carefully is that when we think about the way the building is structured, the idea is that, as we addressed Granite, we've had this masonry cladding, which is, once these here, here, and here. But we also thought that one of the things that helps to mitigate the scale is the reveal joints that begin to break the mass. And previously, I think, when we showed a design on that, it was a little bit more muted and sort of, kind of blended in with the brick. And we began to rethink that, and we thought, actually, we'd better just strike a stronger contrast and actually allow that sort of element here to break. Because it physically breaks, so we thought that in some ways the tone should break. So we're introducing a darker tone that is represented here, so it allows the massing to really be more distinctive in breaking down that facade. So that is one of the changes that we began to impart. Another change we began to impart is adding more detail and thinking more carefully about the windows themselves. And so the idea that we begin to introduce color. And so you can see here are elements that are sort of, I know it's very pale on this screen.
Can you use the board, Tony?
Yeah, I can bring up the board, sure, maybe easier.
Is that a little easier to see? Okay. So here you can see, again, what I pointed out is that the distinction on the reveal was creating a stronger emphasis and a darker tone here, in some ways allows it to recess back. And then the introduction of these elements here that introduces pockets of color, it begins to create some idea within the frame of the windows to introduce a warmer tone, something that is actually, in some ways, creates a different contrast to some of the grays. So I think this allows us to sort of have a different palette. In some ways, there's even a kind of a different nod towards the brick, which has a more orange, reddish tone. But it's not brick, it's intended to be a color. So I think that's an element. And then we also, and we have some more drawings, I can explain this in a little more detail, but essentially, what we're looking at here is to try to introduce more life to the building, introduce more scale, and introduce more warmth. And I think we've already discussed previously the retail component itself, but we also as well looked at things that developed around the corner, a little bit more developed, and of course, what we just described on the enhancement of the streetscape elements on trees, plantings, sidewalk, et cetera. So those are some of the big changes. Some of them are subtle, but some of them are major and substantive in terms of the overall design and the way that the materials are coming together. Next.
Next.
Quick question. That's not to scale, right? The, the truck and the building here are larger because you're closer. Is that the idea?
Uh, yeah, I mean, the building, it is, it is set up and it was constructed in the, in a professional rendering. These trucks and these elements there actually were taken from real photographs. The renders inserted into the photograph of the real site. So that's an actual, there may be some distortion in the lens that was used to photograph it, but that was actually in one of the pictures we, we had. And we introduced the rendering into an actual photograph. Okay. I'll pull up the same thing here on the board for Mechanic Street. So. How to practice doing boards.
Something nice about the board still, Tony.
Yeah, something you can actually touch. So on Mechanic Street, here you can, again, see the same thing that's starting to emerge, where there's more colorway that's being introduced in terms of the window elements. I mean, it's interesting, when we saw that, we also, in some ways, it was a little bit of nod, because for instance, houses have shutters, right? So we thought, well, in, in kind of an abstract way, they also could be viewed as sort of, in some ways, these orange colorways are in some ways a nod towards the idea on houses. They too have elements like this that occur to create some scale elements. And we began to adjust a little bit the color as well. We started to try to adjust a little bit on the gray tone. And all of this, of course, in the palette, will be subject to onsite reviews if we get to that point, with the actual palette, actual samples. I think some of you had already seen some of the materials we brought to the site, but there's a lot more tweaking and refining. But the overall intent is to introduce this idea of scale and variegation. So this also begins to emerge here. Now, this particular rendering, in this particular view, is actually shown with the Pocket Park in this setup. So I think previous renderings showed it with parking, but now you can begin to see what starts to happen when you start to transform this into a little small park instead of parking. Okay, and then the third rendering is the view taken at the corner. We'll come back to this side. So this is a, you know, more developed view at the corner. I think the last time you saw was sort of a watercolor sketch that I did. But here it starts to flush out what's actually happening here. So you start to emerge the idea, you know, don't know what the business will be, but we just, for the moment, showed a florist. There is a florist on the site. But the idea that creating animation at the corner and, and an opportunity not only to capture the retail at the corner, but you can see here it starts to really merge all these ideas that we just discussed. There'll be activation at the corner. There'll be elements along the sidewalk and street that begin to enhance in scale. There'll be things that we're talking about treating on the sidewalk by introducing elements like brick, the idea that we have paving pattern, the idea that we have more planting, the idea that we suggested there's more things that occur along the pedestrian experience as one moves along the element as well. This element here, the 440 that's popping out, that is where the residential lobby is shown. So that is another feature element that will break the streetscape, introduce more scale. And then you can also see here that as we even turn the corner along Mechanic Street, the bottom of this is also picking up sort of a scaling device, which is more masonry. It's brick. And it also has some detail along it. So as one walks along the edge, again, going back to the experience of what most people see, typically, one, one and a half stories as you're moving along a building. So the importance of addressing the scale at the building face and at the pedestrian face is the things that we really tried to enhance and pay attention to, and, and thinking about how we can really introduce more of this detail. So this, this is, this rendering starts to represent that development at the corner as an example of what would carry through the rest of the topic. Next. This is not in rendering here, this is, this is a sketch that I did do. This is another view taking along the entrance to the residential portion. So that's a little bit further down, right here, on this particular rendering. So here you start to see closing up. And I think this also begins to illustrate a couple of things. The idea, we're going to introduce some scaling device to designate the residential use, separate from the retail. And, and here you can begin to see when we carve in those corners and the idea of introducing planting, you know, at the base. So the idea that we can also enhance the experience of some kind of greenscape at each notch as you move along the street, further enhancing the amount of landscaping idea along the pedestrian way. So I think this is something that I think also came from this, this, this group and suggestion that was asked to look at. So we think that's a very positive idea that we really embrace. So it begins to show up here, in terms of this idea of pulling forth a, a development of a, of a ground plane. And then I think we're coming closer to the end here. This next view, this is just, this is just a development, again, I'll pull up the board. Maybe I'll just talk to this. So this particular blow up of a particular section of the plan, this really shows how all the materials essentially come together. So here you can see along the front, this is the side that we just talked about, that is really representing here, along the brick. So at the corner here, you can see this is the brick. And then we, we have a detail around the window openings that introduces sort of this frame idea. Here you see the pockets of color that we're beginning to reduce on the vertical elements. We're also introducing scaling devices in the panels themselves, including the brick, to add further relief and further interest. And then the idea, as we talked about, the darker gray in the notches and the recess on the far left. The idea, even at the corner, when we come from a transition, the material from brick to panelized system, we're literally creating like a reveal joint here. This is allowing us to really distinguish the two materials. It also provides another opportunity for some further introduction of color, of material. So I think, again, all of these devices, and then even when you come to the side, which is the fiber cement, you can see we're carrying through the same idea. We're carrying through the idea that there's a darker hue on the lintel or the spandrel, and then we have a vertical plane that has a different color. So this, this blow up here really represents how these materials are coming together. And I think there's one more image to come. Yeah, a couple more. So this is a larger scale mockup. We didn't bring it here because it probably weighs about a thousand pounds. So, but, but we have a big mockup now, of actually the brick that was being proposed. And we do have a sample here, and we have some of those materials if you wish to look at. But that, that is the idea, and it starts to show that, I think the brick has quite a bit of variegation. We're looking at elongated brick and more like a Norman brick. So I think it adds another visual interest than a conventional brick. And so I think this is the idea, it wants to be kind of a light gray, warm palette for the brick. Next. And here you can see some of the details that I just described at the base. So the idea that on the bottom, the brick itself, we're looking to create some variegation on the, on the corner. So some of the ideas in the window at the base, we're not just having flat brick, but we're having bricks that come in and out. So the idea is to create more scale, more definition, as it begins to add shadow line and details, especially as it relates to the base. And I think that's it.
Could I ask you to go back toward the beginning, when we were talking about scale and density? Yeah, so, so around here, you went through a lot of scenarios. And, you know, we, we've sort of heard a few presentations now, and the idea is that you could do 65 feet by right, you could do 45 feet by right. But if you were to do, let me sit, please, please sit.
Thank you.
And I shouldn't direct it just at you because it's, it's the whole project.
Would you like me to sit over there?
Yeah, wherever you're comfortable is fine.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go, go with your squad. So if you have, you know, we, we've heard this argument a lot, you know, we could do 65 feet, a solid box kind of thing, 45 feet, a solid box, taking up the whole site. But then you would have to be business zoning, right? So you'd have to be able to park it. So it's kind of like, it's, it's not going to happen, because as we know, you're, most of the building would be taken up by parking. So I didn't know if you had thought about, I'm hearing from a lot of the citizens, you know, having talked to them over the years, and, and even specifically to this project, that they see this as part of their neighborhood, even though there's a zone line right there. In fact, part of, one of these properties was zoned residential, I believe, right?
No, just one corner.
One corner was zoned residential, right? So you.
It's treated as commercial because of, because of the way our bylaw treats a, a lot that's in, up to a certain amount of feet beyond the dividing line.
Okay.
Has, the zoning that applies to business district applies to that. So, but yes, there's one lot that has a line across it, and always did, which is interesting.
Right. But you, but even though it's business zoning, you're right in a neighborhood, the neighborhood to it. And I knew usually when, when you, when we talk about putting higher or denser development next to a highway, say, well, you know, it's next to a highway, it's not as big. But it happens that this highway went through, you know, a neighborhood. And so you had, you're, the neighborhood's almost right up, well, it is right up to the highway, too. So one of the things that I was thinking about, I don't know if we could go a few more slides to just get to the structure, the actual, like, where they landed. Yeah, keep going. Maybe this one of these. I'm trying to just get, like, maybe I should just look at this one. Maybe I should just look at this, this document. If, if you were to take off the, the top story and apply some of the setbacks on the fourth story, I, I thought you might have nine less units that way. Because you, you'd be in effect taking out the fourth story and moving the fifth story down, or however you want to word that. But I didn't know, it seemed that that might have a better shadow effect on the neighbors because the, the neighbors on Mechanic Street, when I looked at that shadow study, I know in June, it didn't affect those neighbors across the street as much, but they did lose afternoon sun. And I'm a gardener, and I know that the afternoon sun, if you lose that, you're going to lose, like, 90% of your plants that count on the afternoon sun. But the other thing is, is they, they lose December. They lose the winter months. They, they're, they have a lot of shadows during the midday through three o'clock. So I was just wondering if while you were going through all of these exercises, thinking about ways to chip at it, that you thought about chipping back at the top and coming down. It's, you know, some, something like I had suggested. I didn't know if you had considered that.
If I may.
Yes.
I mean, we did look at many variations and, in stepping it in the front, and, but there's an economics at play. And we're attempting to design a building that's of a standard that, you know, that you would expect, but it's very expensive. And to build right there on the highway with the acoustic materials that we need, windows that, you know, we're, we're looking all over the world for, because they're not, they're not made locally. And I think my point is that we feel that this is, this, the massing that we need to make this project work.
What's interesting, though, this, this massing and this density is, is, I think it's very similar to, you know, the 40B density. It's just, it, it's a lot of density. It's, it's similar to like the, the 40B in, in East Milton as well. I mean, it's, it's.
Only 33 units.
I know, but it's on a teeny spot. And it's, it's five stories high, and it's, it's using up every inch of space. So.
I'm not sure about that. I mean, I, in Boston, we work with an FAR, and I don't think, Tim, that that formula is used here in town.
Not, I mean, not in our, our zoning, but I mean, you can.
What's the total square footage?
Do you have a comparison between those two projects?
I don't, but it's, I could easily prepare that.
But my, my point is, is that it's, it's, it's a lot of density.
We'll give it to you, but I don't have.
So I'm, I'm just having trouble understanding why.
But the economics kind of drive that. I mean, land isn't cheap. The project isn't cheap. And if you consider how much they have to put in instead of the sustainability, to make sure that the people that are buying these units are listening to the noise of the expressway, I mean, which I can hear from my house all the time. So with all the costs that have to go into this, you know, it doesn't make economic sense to do, you know, run the numbers, they're not going to work.
So nine units less? We don't know the numbers.
I've done real estate long enough that, you know, and I know what prices are in East Milton for pieces of land, even pieces of land not particularly exciting as these are. It's just, it's just always a factor that you have to consider is the, is the economy.
The economics, but I want to say, everything in East Milton is selling like hotcakes right at this moment. I've never seen prices so incredible.
The whole town is that way.
I know, the whole town is.
Compare, sorry, our project to, to the project you referenced in East Milton Square. I mean, we're everything that that project is not. We're homeownership. I mean, that's huge.
Well, I, I didn't mean to offend you. I pleased you.
No, no, you didn't.
I was just talking strictly density. I was just looking at the density, and I was trying to say, I'm, I'm just having trouble with the density, the height, and, and the way it, it takes up the, just the whole site.
But it's, it's all massed to the front. I mean, there's a lot of open space at the rear of this building where it completely cuts off, and.
Well, we do have some diagrams. I understand what you're saying. But on this triangular site, it's 10 feet and then 20 feet. And now I don't have it on the top of my head, but we've done all these measurements. And then you go back a certain distance to where the height begins. And I do have it, I will send it to you. But the point really is that you could locate a residential 35-foot house, you'd have to be 10 feet away from each side lot line, next to the next residential house. What we have next to the residential house here is lower than that. And that was one of the big advantages of this design, was frankly, was that it, it did not even create the height that there would be if you had a house, a house, a house, which you do everywhere else. It instead creates only a 20-foot height, going back a considerable distance. And then they tried to add green elements, and, and of course, the way the building looks is certainly very important, but.
So right there by the Pocket Park.
So what Marion's pointing out is this portion here is 20 feet high. This building is set pretty far back. Can you go to the site plan and I can point that up?
Barely.
Back. Great, next one, I'm sorry. This one will work. So our, our building is approximately, the height of the building is approximately right here. The house is back here. We're significantly, we're a significant distance from the house. This portion is Marion's saying is 20 feet tall, shorter, shorter than that existing building.
And then it goes from 20 feet up to five stories, right, right length.
It goes up to four stories setbacks, setback.
Oh, I see, four, and then to the fifth.
Where is, oh, I'm sorry, while you're standing there, can you point to where it starts at the five?
Yeah, could you, could you go then? Sorry about that. Would you go there?
I think the next slide will be easier to see.
Do you want to go to the? Do we have it on the site plan?
Yes, site plan.
No, it's the same thing, sorry. It's right there.
Or just, yeah.
So this is, this is the edge of our building, and then this is the back of the site. The house sits here.
Yep, so where is the five stories?
It's, it's, this is four, and then it sets back to five. So it's, it's a, one of our earlier submissions gave you a bunch of dimensions showing how far we are.
Yeah, no, I, I was just curious in this discussion.
So it's, I don't know what the, it's around 50 feet, I think? But we can go back, I mean, we can resend you that information, if that's helpful.
I think also, when we look at the diagrams, and I know that your considerations are perhaps other, but in the financial pro forma analysis, when we look at those scenarios, in order to offset, if you said what you just said and you spun it through, we would have to increase height around the backside of Mechanic Street to offset the loss of unit count and area that we, that, that we would suggest removing at the top level, because we have to make up the areas that are construing to the units. So it would push around the mass, the increased height along Mechanic Street as a result, which is why we rejected those inertial earlier concept diagrams when we really played with, trying to analyze the massing relationship as respect to the pro forma, but also the density, the requirements to build a number of units. In each of those scenarios, we said that, that cast too much of an dispersion towards particularly this side of the site. So what can we do that's the lesser impact? And so not only did we thrust the bulk of the impact towards granite, but we also are setting back the fifth floor as well on that side. So even though, yes, it's five stories, but that fifth floor is pulled back along the entire rear edge, side edge. So the only part that steps up to the five stories is really along granite. In the view, in the perspective, points that out, because what happens on the back is a, is a continuous deck for the top floor apartments that holds it back and see, yeah, here. That fifth floor is held back further from them as well. So we were, we were, we understand, I, I understand the questions that are being raised here, but it really was an attempt to try to mitigate as many factors as we possibly could and to come up with a design that we had, we tried to come up with a design that had the most positive benefits with lesser impact. Will it have impact? Yes, it will. We're not saying it won't. This is a new development. It's a, it's a project that is of a fairly bigger size. It is not something that exists there right now, but for all the reasons that we said at the beginning, why, and I think particularly in working with our client, they're trying to do a really high-quality project here to try to create economic vitality and to bring some life to the, to the street as well, and, and to try to mitigate some other aspects to the extent we can.
Danny May?
Yeah.
I'd just like to point out that when we did the zoning analysis and spent three years looking at Milton Village, first in the Master Plan Implementation Committee and then in the Planning Board, and then some, the initial planning work from, or done by the ULI Technical Assistance Panel and then Barrett Planning, in all those cases, ULI Technical Assistance Panel, and then Barrett Planning, in all those cases, we asked them to take a look at, you know, what's the level of development that might be necessary or might be required to have a project that can really work, right? The reason we have dis, we don't have investment in our business districts is because our zoning is antiquated, and the economics are challenging because the sites are small. And so in the Milton Village part, when we were looking at, we spoke to developers, and we said, you know, does this zoning make sense? Can you do a project here and make the numbers work? And a couple of them gave the opinion that what we came up with in the end was right at the line in Milton Village, in terms of what would be something that they could say, yeah, they could get financing and make a project work. And so I think it's a really good question, you know, and if we think about the fact that a 20,000-square-foot lot generates, what, $35,000 in tax revenue? When at town meeting, there's been all sorts of comment about we need more commercial tax revenue in Milton because the pressure on the residents is so high. Multi-family residential and mixed-use projects are commercial development. You know, they're not, they get taxed at a commercial development level. So the, that's to say, where can we get more tax revenue in our town? People say, where can we get more commercial development? Most people say, let's do it in our business districts where we already have business district zoning. Our business district zoning is antiquated, that's why we're not seeing new investment. So these folks are ahead of our planning work in East Milton, but is this along the path that we've been seeing is a viable path? And according to the Barrett Report and the ULI, yes, they think that the additional height is warranted closer to the highway. But if you look at the diagrams that are in the Barrett Report, it's like a wedding cake effect. But is that the best approach to reduce your height along Granite Avenue where the highway is and keep some more height on Mechanic Street? Or is it better to shift it as they've recommended here? I personally think it's better to shift it because of the highway. So if you wrote zoning, you, like in Boston, when they write zoning, they don't tell you you have to step it in on every side. They tell you what your average step in has to be, and then they expect it to be looked at on a site-by-site basis. And so I think, well, this makes sense to me for this site. Would this make the same sense on a different site? Probably not, right? You have to look at the site specifically. And so I tend to agree with the approach that they've given us. I don't, I can't speak to their economics, but I can refer to what we've learned and other, from other studies. So having the bulk of the building shift towards the Granite Avenue makes the most sense to me. And so I just, from a massing point of view, I know there's other questions about, and I really think that we have to be mindful that it provides a type of housing that we know we need. We know we need more variety in our housing stock. Our housing production plan says we do. Our master plan says we need to look at our business districts and zone for the potential of mixed use, because back then, which was some time ago, as I was involved in that master plan, and there were a lot of public meetings about it, everybody recognizes that in order to get the improvements that you're looking for, and I know Judy Barrett talked about this when she spoke to us, is that you need to have enough development to help pay for those improvements, to pay to put the power lines underground, to pay to get the sidewalks improved, and to provide additional amenities for residents. So I think this project is a good project, and I think we should continue to try and work to make it better and give some further guidance to the team and to the ZBA.
You go ahead. I'll follow you, yeah.
All right. Well, so, because we're starting to talk about like what our thoughts are. So I will say, to start with, I do really appreciate the boards over here that were talking about sustainability. I know I asked upfront about the electric, so that all sounds really great. If we get to that point, I would like to know more about the green roof. I've never really spent a lot of time, I am a sustainability, but I've never spent a lot of time on green roofs, because honestly, the last time I dove into them, I heard a lot of stories about, negative stories about them. So it'd be interesting to see what has changed over the last couple of years that you think makes it worth investing in. But I think that's all great. I don't want to speak to the economics at all. I'm not in real estate, nor am I a developer. You know, I'm, the economics piece is yours, whether you can make the project work or not. The way I look at, I'm looking at it, and I do appreciate your comments, Denny, because the reality is, somebody asked, I was talking to somebody way far away from here, we were talking, they asked me where I lived, and I said, oh, I got a, I said a business district, and it popped into my head, everybody calls it a business district. We've got a couple blocks of one edge is a business district, is the reality. These aren't blocks of business district, it's not, you know, it's basically a street, and nothing comes in. And what you see right through those businesses is lots of very close houses. And so that's why I, you know, I'm a few blocks from there, but that's why people are pretty passionate about being afraid of what comes in, because when you start talking five or six stories, the reality is, there's a lot of, there's a lot of potential on that street for future development. You start with five, what's going to come next door, what's going to come next door, and then it creeps into the bigger part of that district. Could be scary, or could just section off that part of town, which would be unfortunate. I had a lot of positive thoughts on the Barrett Report. I'm not, I don't think I'm in line with where it ended, you know? The amount and just how much business that could potentially go there, I don't think it makes sense geographically for this area. The reality is, the town needs to figure out what they want in this area to start, and then kind of back into it. But I'm in, the way I look at it is, it's not about what I think or what I want. I mean, I'm going, and I think I said this upfront, I was curious to hear what you had been working on with the neighborhood. I will tell you, because Jack Dolly was here earlier, and for the record, I really appreciate that he came in, the thing I liked most about the Walcott Woods project is, the very first time I met with him, he came in with a representative from the neighborhood, and they'd already spent months and months and months and months working on it, and came to a seeming agreement. Now, there's always a lot of back and forth, and probably either side didn't agree on everything, but I thought, I really appreciated that, sitting on a board. So I'm going to be very interested to hear what folks say, and if, you know, I myself have also heard from folks, like, geez, it's really large. And so in my mind, sure, I'm sure there's an economic issue there, but does that mean you could take off one floor? Or I'm sure everybody would like to see three floors removed, but the reality is, that's not obviously going to work. Even I can figure that out. But personally, I think you should invest some time into seeing what changes in this building. You're putting a lot into the building, it sounds like. I worked at the utility for 10 years. I know it's going to cost you a lot of money to do what you're going to do. And so maybe that's not where you should be spending your money if the town wants to see you, the neighborhood wants to see you come down. It's my thought. I mean, I really do suggest you think about the massing a bit, only because the way I look at it is from a future standpoint of what we're starting, what we're starting there in that little area. That's just my thought.
Yeah, I mean, that's, the feedback that I get when I talk to people in East Milton is that, and this came out during the Barrett Report, is that they're not necessarily looking for amenities. Sure, they'll take them if they come with some development, they'll, nobody's going to say no to amenities. Amenities are great. But what they really say to me is, they don't want to go beyond four stories. They like a three to four step up. They're, going to five stories is like a third rail. And this sort of density without any green space. My sense is, they're looking for a very village feel. So, you know, as an elected representative, I just feel that I should convey that, that this feels very urban. And, you know, when I was out collecting signatures for my campaign four or five years ago, what I was told by countless people was, I saved up everything I had to get out of the city so I could live in this suburb of Boston. I didn't necessarily want to live in, you know, I didn't want to come here and have it turn into, you know, a city. So that's the feedback that I'm getting. So I just feel that I should pass that along. I have other comments, but I wanted to let other people speak if they
To that point, I would like to request that we actually hear directly from the public at our meetings, because I don't, I appreciate that some people may speak to you, but I feel like I need to hear directly from people myself.
Sure.
And I'd like to hear from them on the particular proposal, because our business districts are spread in a few different neighborhoods. Our 40Bs are spread in a few different neighborhoods. And we have to, the planning board needs to think of things collectively as a town, not just a pocket of this and that, and very specific. And so I'm very concerned that we be micro-focused and not thinking about the big picture. And so I would like to hear from people directly.
I would too. Shall I say my comments? Then we should let the public speak, I think, too.
Yes, I'm very interested in them.
So, yeah.
Sure.
And I also, it's, the difference in four and five stories for me, it changes it from suburban to urban. It is just, it is, I think it's absolutely out of scale. One thing that I was interested in, you've provided some great, some visuals from all different angles, except for, one of the most visual areas is when you come over the expressway from the west, coming west to east, and you're coming over and you're heading into East Milton, and you see the Citizens Bank over there. What is that going to look like? Because from that angle, you're looking to your left, and it's single-story buildings all on that, on that piece of granite. And then you're going to look to your, you know, then you're going to see the buildings in front of you, you're going to see the Citizens Bank, which is one and a quarter stories maybe, and then you're going to see a five-story building looking that way. And that's going to be really visible, and that's probably one of the most, the most frequently timed, that people are going to visually see that, is when they do that loop, going from, going to the food center, going and coming around, and as you're coming across, and you're going to see all of these one, two, two and a half stories, and then you're going to see five stories. And I'm just visualizing that, just without seeing this, I'm thinking in my mind, how out of place and out of character that that is going to, that's going to appear. I also feel like this is a precedent. Even though it's on the expressway, it is, it is, it's, what happens from this building is a jumping-off point for future developments. And even though it's on the expressway, and you're saying, well, no, you know, we wouldn't do it next to this building because it's not right on the, on the expressway, I just think, I just think it's changed the look, the feel of this entire area. And like you said, I don't want to separate this little area from the other part of East Milton. And I think that would, because this looks like, you would see this in Quincy, you would see this in South Boston, you know, parts of, you know, Dorchester, you would, you wouldn't be surprised to see this. But you would be really surprised to see this building in Milton. If you moved away for 10 years and you came back, you would be shocked. You would be absolutely
We're going to be really surprised to see our 40Bs, too.
So, well, that's, so that is, actually, that's, no. And we're going to, but we will be getting the numbers. One of my biggest concerns is variance for parking, which we can further address, because I know people have been talking about, there's been traffic studies, it's underparked. I just want to tell you that I'm a customer of Milton Nail Spa and Spa, and I was there last Thursday, and
Julie, I don't know if you have a picture. There was a picture that a citizen submitted today. I don't know if Allison or Tim had it.
Last Thursday, there, which is a wonderful thing, it is a thriving business, and it's, I'm so happy for that business, that it's really taken off. She actually has bought the residence, the house next door to the, on Mechanic Street, the First Street Inn. The owner of Milton Nail Spa has moved there. I could not find a parking place, a parking spot, until I had to go all the way down to the Milton Flower Shop. So it's changed, it might not have used to be like that that was a very popular area, but I thought, maybe it was just a fluke, it was before 4th of July, so everybody was out, because it was, the salon was packed. So not only were there probably 20 employees there, but there were, I don't know how many, like 20, at least 20 people getting their nails done, if you were there. I don't know.
No, I would never go there, because I'm a sailor, there's no way.
So anyway, I'm just telling you, this is what, and it's a thriving business, but I had to go all the way, basically this entire building, I had to go to the very end to get a parking spot, so I thought
And there's this picture that was submitted, people are parking on the lawns.
So that's actually Van's house.
Oh, okay.
And so what she, what it appears she's doing is having her, because she doesn't want to take up her customers' parking, so they're parking all along Mechanic, all along Granite, maybe Mechanic, I don't know if they park on Mechanic, but the lot was full. So I thought, maybe it was just last Thursday, it was before 4th of July. So I decided to go two o'clock today to drive down. Every spot on Mechanic Street was occupied. The Granite, and I did the loop a number of times, there was somebody having their, the person next to this building was doing some roof work, so there was a truck, he had to ask his tenant to not park in the driveway because they were doing roofing, and the tenant said, well, where am I going to park then? I spoke to some residents, they said, you know, Navara Park, ever since Navara went in, Navara parks on Mechanic Street. So what I was looking at, because I actually really like the stackable units, and I think it's a really efficient way to park, and sort of a very future, you know, especially with the, that you can hook up your electric vehicle and charging stations. But there's 33 units in this building, and you're going to put 38 parking places in there, which means that basically, almost every unit can only have one vehicle unless they park off-street, other than five, so
There is no off-street parking.
There is no off-street, they have to, if they have two vehicles in
They do not, they would not be able
Milton doesn't have overnight parking on the street.
This is a problem.
So visitors will park on the
It's a limitation in the units and the way they will be managed. That is the problem. That is not a problem. So this is a problem, well, so this is what, I'll just finish. So you have 33 places that you can park, and
Well, 33 units, 38 spots.
38 spots. So most two-bedroom, although just from a real estate perspective, and Michael can really speak to, you know, 36 Central, because maybe that's a comparison, but the majority of these units, and I think because of the prices that they're going to sell for, are going to be couples or partners. You know, I think it's, we maybe, you got, there was a few residents that moved in that were singles in 36 Central, but most were couples. And I don't know, or two people in a unit. And in Milton, I don't know anyone who, two couples, that they don't both have vehicles. I think it's very, you might, there might be a few. And I hope, and I hope, you know, people are doing that, but it's not like this is on, like at a T station. It's not on
No, there's a bus right there.
Well, there's a bus.
I take it all the time.
Good, all right, that's good. I know. I'm just, I'm wondering what the
Just on that, real quick.
Reality, yes.
In the Milton Village, when I made some phone calls about parking, because I called all of the apartment and condo buildings in the area, there, there is a clientele that is not being, their needs aren't being met. Like 50 Elliott said, if they had more one-bedroom units, they would be flying off. They've got mostly two beds there. And that came from the owner, you know, who I spoke to, one of the owners. And the thing is that we're used to having everybody with single families in Milton, right? And that's a different demographic.
No, this is not, this is not here.
Well, okay, so let's just say, you say, most people in Milton, two people have two cars, but it's because of the kind of market that it's, that Milton has typically attracted, because it's mostly a single-family community. But there are people who don't want cars, and there are people who will only want one car depending upon where they work, and they will self-select where they live based on that. So they won't, if somebody needs two cars, and they're buying into a building that only has the opportunity for one with no on-street parking, I suspect that they're not going to buy there, because it won't meet their needs, just like they may have a need for a big lawn, that they won't have, this won't meet their needs. So they'll go some, to some other development that would have the parking, would have the lawn.
So can I just finish on this?
Sure, sorry.
So, so the other question is, that bears in mind, if you have a guest, so where are the guests going to park? And I just, relating to the commercial, because it states in your notes, I believe, that no, and I'll just, let me just find here, it was under parking, that, or actually, it might have been in the commercial area, that no, hold on, let me find my notes now. Oh, here. This is what you wrote. "The commercial parking demand will be reduced by restricting the type of commercial tenants to those that do not attract high-volume vehicular traffic. The commercial tenants will be of a type to be able to provide services or goods of a particular use of the building, residents, residents of nearby neighborhoods, and shoppers already in the square." and shoppers already in the square. None of these customers will be driving to the site." And I'm just not sure how you think you can control no shoppers driving to a site of, for a business.
You control, well, you know, we don't have the tenants, so I can't give you a list of tenants and say, "Okay, here are the tenants," and guess what? And also, you know, this is forever, so in the future, you could have different tenants. One of the features of this building is that the developer will continue to own the commercial units, which means you continue to control the types of tenants. So, I guess I'd ask you, Michael, to address that a little bit. But the point is, I have to use restaurants as the example, because they've caused so much fear.
Well, and you said there will be no restaurants.
There will be no restaurants.
We're not, I'm not even thinking that.
These are not, these are not commercial spaces that are, the tenants invited to, to come to these spaces will not be tenants that have a high volume of clientele going in and out. And they would be, the developer is looking for tenants, a florist is a good example. Honestly, there's one there now. Unfortunately, there'll be this hiatus, if you do build this development, because it has to go somewhere. But if the florist were still around, the florist could be a tenant. Florist is a good tenant for this type of site. Most, a lot of florist business is done remotely. You know, you take the flowers in, and then you just take them somewhere. But it's attractive, you know? It usually dresses up the site. Anyway, so it's, it's a nice idea. A professional office space, a professional who does not have a lot of clients going in and out of the office, is a low-volume user, but sometimes likes a space that's on the street, that, you know, that's visible, and that has a sign that, you know, advertises the business. I forget, we had some other examples that we talked about, but I guess that...
So, you have, you have employees, for, so, going back to Milton Nail Spa, so you have employees that work there. They, most likely, you know, even if it's a printing business that delivers printing materials, you're still going to have people coming and picking up things. You still, even though as a florist, if you go to Cedar Grove, you have people going and picking up flower arrangements. It just, it's a reality. And so, I'm just, I'm, I'm really trying to be realistic and, and help with how we do this, that you, that, because I'll tell you, I, in driving down there, every spot was taken on the, on the street. So, I would welcome somebody to drive tomorrow at midday and see what it's like on Mechanic Street, you know, just walk that side.
We're not, we're, we are not talking about, I realize you can't control what people park, it's public parking on the street. But we're not talking about having people park on Mechanic Street necessarily. Mechanic Street's busy, people park there now in front of the residences, they're parked there from the businesses in the square. I know that. I've seen it. I know it happens all the time. I think in particular, the thing that surprised me a little bit with that, those old studies, was that they did show vacancies on Granite Ave. And as I said, that was, that's existing conditions, whatever businesses were in there then. This is going to be now, and whatever businesses will be in here now. I, I think this is a problem that, that we need to look at carefully. I think whether we can provide any parking spaces on-site is an issue, and it's why we tried to provide four. I don't think it's the critical issue in this development, from what everybody's saying. I think what we've struggled with from the beginning was the design, and the amount of units that you need in order to create enough value to build a really high-quality development, which is what Milton is about. This is the type of development you want in Milton.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mary. We're almost into an hour, and I just wanted to hear from the public tonight, too, so I'm, I'm sorry, but...
And I'll wrap up really quickly.
And I wanted Michael to have an opportunity to try and...
I just wanted to add on materials, because I do think high-quality materials do, you, you know, a higher building requires higher quality materials. And I'll just use 88 Worf, for example. Those are high-quality materials, if you go down to 88 Worf. I'm in the residential side, so I have a good idea of what these units would sell for. My husband is actually a residential developer, and I was showing him the materials and discussing and asking him his thoughts. And he uses the fiber cement panels all the time on buildings, on all different locations. And he said, "This is probably one of the cheapest materials that we use. We use this to offset, we do real, you know, some real stone, real limestone in a certain area, but they use these cement panels to offset the cost of the expense of the real high-quality materials." So, what I'm seeing here looks like a lot of really inexpensive materials, and I'm, I just, I'll just tell you, well, I'm not going to... Fiber cement panel, from somebody who's in the business, who says that is one of the least expensive ways, and you're all in the business.
I'm sorry, we're going to have to take turns, okay? We'll let Mary and, we'll let Meredith finish, and then we'll be happy to hear from you.
I, I, I'm not so sure, so certain, and I will just say, on the density, and this is, will be my last comment, but the Falcone project has 95 residential units. They are, they are located, they are on 1.1 acres. This, this project is, at 440 Granite, is 33 units on .46 acres. If you take off the 20...
33 units.
33 units. If you take off the 24 affordable units at Falcone, and you leave, that leaves 91 market-rate units. Your, what you have is, of your units, if you put those number of units on a 1.1-acre lot, you would basically have the same density as what Falcone's proposing. So, if you, if you took on the lot coverage...
Well, wait a minute, it's much, it'd be 66 units.
Yeah. No, it's over, it's 1.1 acres. I'm saying if you take out the affordable units.
We have affordable units.
You have affordable.
Three. Sorry, okay, three. So, you're, three, which is, which is wonderful, and we need every unit we can. I'm saying, all right, so take off the three. But if you calculate, if you double your unit, that's 66 units, but that's still not even a full acre. Falcone is a 1.1 acre, so it's over that. It's, you're, you're pretty close to the same number of units, density-wise, just excluding the, if you take out the affordables. I'm saying from a market, market-rate units, you're almost, you're almost compatible. If you built the same number of units you're building on, and doubled, more than doubled that, on a 1.1 acre, you can calculate, you're almost to what the Falcone's project is, which is a 40B project.
I don't know anything about Falcone's project, and I'm not sure...
It's just numbers. It's just numbers. I'm talking density. It's just a density of, of what you're asked, the ask.
Isn't it 101 units?
No, it's 95.
Well, they had to come down a little bit, because they were, had to really just, but seriously, it's, it's...
It's density, it's what I'm, it's what I'm saying.
But it's a completely separate, it's apples and oranges. That's a 40B coming in under all, it's 40B coming...
And they'll tell you it's high-quality, too, I'm sure.
But homeownership...
Okay, so we'll take turns. Did Kathleen want to finish, and then we're happy to hear from you?
So, unfinished, but...
I do want to hear from you. I appreciate, I appreciate, this is a hard position to be in, and I'm, and I'm sorry, we're trying to give you feedback, but, and I understand, and, and I know you've worked really hard on these plans, and, but I, I just want, with the board finish, we'll hear from the applicants, and then we'd like to hear from the public, and then we'll hear from the applicants again, okay? So, so Kathleen?
I'm just briefly saying that I have lived in East Milton for 30 years. So, when I moved to East Milton, there was a Woolworths, there was a bookshop, there was a video store, there were a number of things, a bowling alley, and I think the movie theater had just closed. So, I've been through the period of East Milton where it had businesses, and I've been through the period of East Milton where you could have rolled a bowling ball and not hit a soul, because all of the businesses closed, including the video store, and the bookshop, and the Woolworths, and everything else. So, it's now on its way back. The restaurants have made a huge difference. It's made a huge difference in terms of the number of people. I work out of my house, I walk to the post office, I walk to the bank, I'm walking around all the time, and it's terrible right now. It's, walking around that neighborhood is, is, is putting your, you know, putting your life at risk. There's been a lot of talk about village appearance and the village feel, and I would just have to say that, actually, I'm not a Massachusetts native, and I was actually born in California, and I grew up in New York. And I know what villages look like. The village of Scarsdale, the village of Larchmont, the village of Nerschel was a village, where Takahoe, all these places that everybody watches on television. I've seen villages. Now, I drive on Granite Ave all the time, and you see the, the old Kennedy Carpet Store, you see some sort of Swiss chalet kind of look that's supposed to be some office building, and then you see this brick thing, which is only brick on one side, and then you see the corner where the bike shop is, and it's sort of mismatch of buildings. And so, it's not like Milton, East Milton has a village feel at the moment. It kind of looks like, you know, a bad day at the races, as you enter into town. So, my personal feeling on this project is that it's something, it's a housing style that we need in this town, and certainly, a person like me, who's living in a single-family house, is finding an idea of moving to a condo very attractive, as you deal with, you know, new roofs and new, all that sort of stuff. So, I do think it makes a statement, as you drive into town, that is much more satisfactory than what we have at the present. When you drive off the expressway and you heat East Milton Square, it's not like you say, "Oh, my God, I've arrived in Oz." You kind of say, "I've sort of drive in the backyard of something." So, I think this is a, is a great design. I'm willing to sort of work with this team and listen to the neighbors as well about their comments, but I do think, as a person who has been practicing real estate law for an unbelievably long period of time, is that, this is a, is a project, this is a developer that has done another project in town already, that I know people have been very satisfied with. And I represented an affordable buyer in that project, and she was thrilled and has been. So, I think, you know, it's, it's obviously something different, but we are not braggadoodle, and change is coming to this town, and this, I think, would be making a lovely statement as you drove in off the expressway.
Jenny, can I make one comment?
Yes, please do.
Sorry, and I know, yeah. No, I, I just want to make a comment, like, because, so I agree with, with the comment about, like, you know, because if you build, if you build it, right, the right people are going to come. If you, if, if I'm looking for an apartment, and I have three cars, and there's no parking, well, I'm not moving there, I'm moving somewhere else. So, I, I mean, I kind of, I buy into that. But I do think there is, we should be looking at the issues with parking, because reality is, it's gotten crazy, and there is no enforcement at all in all of East Milton when it comes to these things. And so, I do think we should be mindful of it. The reality is, I do want to see development, so, because I always hear on the board, like, we all definitely have opinions, and they're all great, and I welcome, you know, opposing ones. It's just, I just want to make, no, like, I, and I think all of us, are very interested in seeing some new, interesting things coming to the neighborhood, and I think most neighbors want to see revitalization. They don't want to see the East Milton sit the way it is, with like, construction trucks in all of East Milton for 10 years, you know? Like, we want to see it look great, we want to see it happen, we want a nice village feel. But I definitely think we should scrutinize every one of these projects to say, is, are they doing it the right way? I don't think that's inappropriate, and I don't think it's us...
This one's going to be precedent-setting, because it's one of the first large-scale ones that we've seen.
But I just want to...
It is one of the first mixed-use that we've seen in this area, so...
So, sorry, I, yeah, I would love to hear what the neighbors have to say.
Yeah, but, but did we, I know we were saying a lot, and, and Michael, please forgive me, I didn't get your last name when I met you.
Troy Moore.
Okay, so, so nice to meet you. Please feel free to respond if you...
So, I'm a Milton resident, and, you know, I listen to the Warren Committee, and I, I pay attention to the things that are happening in town, and, and the 40Bs, and I have kids in school, and it's concerning. I mean, I don't want to have to go to private school. I want my kids to go to Milton Public Schools, and there's a wrecking coming with that, with the amount of 40Bs that's going to come into this town, additional families, additional strain on the schools. Everybody knows, knows it. This project is completely different. It has, it offers some serious tax revenue. It's for empty nesters, it's for, it's not for families. I don't think a child has ever lived at 36 Central. Maybe, maybe a young assen or two, but that's not what this, this project will be, and it's, it's going to be good for the town. And everything that has happened in, this is our third meeting, this project has improved all the way through the process, and I think it's, it's, it's very good. Each member brings different aspects, but there is a, a density that we need to get. And I appreciate you comparing us to the other large project in East Milton Square, and I'd like to take a closer look at that. But eliminating their affordables is, is kind of like, you can't just do that and think that, you know, affordable units, and I've built and worked on projects where there's affordable units, affordable units have value, significant value in relation to tax credits and other streams of revenue that they bring in. So, I think the team here have done a fantastic job. I take slight offense to some of your remarks on the material selection.
I'm not...
But we're happy to continue the conversation and, and develop this project further.
Thank you. We'd like to hear from the public, and then you'll be welcome to speak again afterward, if that's okay. Okay?
And so, shall we sit?
That would be ideal. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and the citizens who would like to speak on this are welcome to come up. I'll take Mr. D'Amato first, if I could, because I know his name. And I'm going to do a 23B3, just bear with me, I lost my little piece of paper. Here it is. I just want to do a 23B3 disclosure. I belong to an association, namely the Milton Neighborhood Coalition. I, I believe Andy D'Amato's attended some of those meetings. So, pursuant to guidance from the State Ethics Commission, I feel that I can be fair and objective in carrying out my official duties as a planning board member and hearing out Andy D'Amato's thoughts on this project.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'm Andy D'Amato, I happen to live on Pear Street, which is right next to Mechanics, and I've lived there for over 30 years, and I do remember the 5 and 10 as well. I'm dating myself. I'm a town meeting member, and I was a participant in the ULI and the Barrett Steering Committee, which got, the name got changed to something, I don't know what it was, but it did get changed. It's a unique site, you know, to build on, and I can appreciate the challenges that the developer has, but it's also a unique neighborhood as well. And there are some challenges that I don't think the rest of the town has. We are sandwiched between Adams Street and the expressway, and, you know, when I moved in there, I knew that. So, it's no big surprise, but the recent changes have caused things to change in our neighborhood that, quite frankly, are not safe anymore. For instance, today, I, before I came here, within a half-hour, four cars came up Granite Street the wrong way. And of course, when you go up a street the wrong way, what do you do? You gun it, because you don't want to get caught. Our streets do not have curbs. Therefore, when people park on the street, they sort of come up on a sidewalk, and that makes residents have to walk between cars to get to their car or to, you know, pedestrians also walk up from, from Quincy, they walk up to the square a lot. Our sidewalks are in bad shape there as well. But there are a lot of safety issues that concern me with this project, and those are the main things I wanted to, to talk about. Also, the parking issue, there's people parking on our street from that, and, and all these things are small, but when you add them up, it begins to come to something. So, people park there for the restaurants, the employees park there, which, big deal, right? They're parking on your street. The, the, people patronizing the restaurants will park on a street. But we don't, again, we don't have the curb cuts, so, you know, it becomes a cut-through. We have cars coming both ways, not in one way. Now, when I pull out of my driveway, which I do have to back out of, I have to look both ways. I mean, there's no doubt about it. If I don't, one of these days, I'm going to get sideswiped. So, I can't see how a project of this mass is going to improve the quality of life in that particular neighborhood. And I understand, we're talking about the whole town here, and I did say town, I did not say city. This is not Boston, referenced many times, in Boston, they, in Boston, they do this. We're not in Boston, we're in Milton. It's the town of Milton. We're not in Quincy. This is not the ink block. This is not the ink block. We, these, this building does not sit on the red line. It does not sit at Ashmont like the other buildings of its size in Quincy do. I agree that, and believe, and I appreciate it, I didn't mention that I'm a board member of East Milton Neighborhood Association, I'm sorry. But Michael came to us first and said, what do you think? You know, and we said, we love the location. You know, it's great. The expressway, to Kathleen's point, it's a mess there, right? I mean, all those buildings are chopped up, and it's, you know, part is an old house, but I don't want to, I don't want to change, trade one ugly problem for another. And I'm not saying your building's ugly, I just don't think it's appropriate for that area. So this is a forever building, and some of the things they're doing are great, but I don't want, I don't want to see, and many of my neighbors feel the same way. I sat on the Barrett report, and this area was designated as a transition area between the neighborhoods. So townhouses, two to three stories, that's what was in the Barrett report for this area. The bigger buildings were up front further. Now, I know that's just, you know, one report, and things change, but why did we do these reports if we're not listening to them? There's so many things about this building that are just, you know, up in the air, just from this meeting alone. Are you going to meet the leads? Don't know. Wires on the ground? Maybe. EV parking, chargers in the parking stalls, some, maybe more. You know, are you going to have photo, solar panels? Are those going to add height to the building? I don't know. This is a good one. We anticipate small trucks for the residents. Now, in all due respect, I did hear this before on Novara, and I can take a picture every day, if you like, and send it to you, of an 18-wheeler or a large truck, double parking in East Milton, either on Granite, I mean, either on Adams or Franklin, and causing a traffic jam. I could take a picture every day of this. I, like Kathleen, walk everywhere in the square, and it is a mess. As far as the parking, you know, everybody knows Granite Ave is a mess. The parking's backed up, that's why people are coming up my street the wrong way. How is adding 33 units for 38 spaces going to help that situation? I don't think it is. I think it's going to make it worse, and there's nothing there that's mitigating that problem. There's no parking for, you know, we said, we want amenities, and then on the other hand, say, well, we're going to get, maybe put an office or a professional building. Is that really, you know, an amenity for the neighborhood? I mean, a florist is a great idea, but florists have vans, and if you're successful, you're going to have a lot of them. You're not just going to have one. The businesses that are there now are underutilized, there's no question. They're not very vibrant, and I'm sure Mr. Moore wants vital, a vital business. So we're going to see increased, you know, traffic. Is, you know, obviously, that's what you want. So, yeah, I just think it's too big, and it's too dense, and it does not look like anything in East Milton, and it would be by far the biggest building in East Milton. Now, if you look at that updated rendering in Mechanic Street, that single-family house from that angle looks about 80 feet tall. If I'm going to assume his building 70 feet tall, that does look at least 10 feet taller. I mean, that's just, you know, a bad view. It's deceiving. So that's kind of stuff irritates the neighbors when they see that. You know, there's a lot of variances. You know, you've got the mixed use, the special permit, the side-back permit, you want relief from parking for the businesses, you want relief for parking for the residents. Maybe this just isn't the right spot for this building. Maybe with all these variances that you need, maybe you ought to reconsider building the thing there at all, much less dropping a floor. But I would like to see, and a lot of my neighbors would like to see redevelopment there. It just has to be sensible, and it has to fit the neighborhood. In all due respect to, you know, the financial aspect, I understand it has to be feasible to have a developer build something, but there's also a profit margin involved as well. And I don't know his, the developer's business, but I think for the neighbors to be happy, and this was bore out in the Barrett report, neighbors do not want five stories, they want four.
Danny, may I just, Mr. D'Amato?
Well, actually, can we let him finish, and then?
Sure. I just want to point that out.
He's got notes. Once he's done...
And I just have one more, you know, the whole step up in the back, I understand how that looks a little less dense than, obviously, it looks less dense than, you know, five straight stories coming up. But the reality is, when you look at a house, they were talking about two single-family houses being next to each other, da-da-da. When you look over the top of a, of a house, a regular residence, you see sky. When you look over that 20-foot, you know, first floor, which you're saying is less than a house, you see a building. You don't have the clouds, you don't have the sun. So it doesn't really reduce the size of the building. I get what they're saying about reducing the appearance, but it doesn't, it's still five stories, it's still casting shadows, it's still enormous. Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you had reached the end of your comments. I just, I was a little confused, so I just went back to the Barrett report, and on page 31, it does show this site as a triangle mass of five stories, and that's stepping in evenly like a wedding cake. That's what I referenced before. So this was the final report, and that, and that's what I was referencing earlier, so I don't know if you have the final report.
I do have the final.
Yeah, so this is this site right here, and so, again, maybe...
You're correct there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're correct on that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay. So, up against the highway, I think it's, you know, to say that this, I think somebody said on their team, this backs up to a neighborhood is a little bit of an understatement, since they took two houses down to put it. So it sits on the neighborhood, it doesn't back up to it. Those two houses were residential houses that are coming down in this. So it's actually sitting on the neighborhood, not backing up to it. I know that's, you know, that may be just vernacular, but I think it's an important piece, you know, it's going in the neighborhood, on it. So I think we really have to look at, you know, what's fair to development now, what's fair to development in the future, and how does it affect the surrounding neighbors? Now, I know things change, and the names change all the time, and I'm welcome to that, but, you know, when I bought my house in the town of Milton 30 years ago, I had an expectation that it would stay a town, and I hope it does. And I hope the development that comes in here in its final iteration is one that allows a developer to make some money and, you know, provides housing, and maybe, hopefully, not too many kids for the school system, and it doesn't burden, you know, the town fire department, police department, too much, and that he can make some money, and it will enhance the town. I just don't think this is the building, and I don't think many of my neighbors do either. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amato. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public? Please come up.
Hi, my name's David Doherty. I've lived in that neighborhood since 1965.
Do you want to sit and join us? Do you want to tell us the street number?
I grew up on Sunnyside Road.
Okay.
And I've lived on Pear Street since 1984.
Okay, thank you for coming.
I lived in one house, and I bought another building and made it my dream house. I can tell you that parking's been a serious issue. I understand people, they opened up the restaurants up the street, I can understand that they're going to spill onto our street a little bit. Every weekend, I have cars in front of my house, sometimes blocking my driveway. I say very little. That picture that you just had up of the brick house with the cars, my house is directly behind that house.
Okay.
For the last month or so, I'm seeing cars pull in at night in my backyard. I look out, just, I look out the other day, there's six or seven cars in the backyard. They're using that as a commercial parking space because there is not enough parking up there. And as far as the height of this building, it's way out of line. You can say you're going to step back this fifth story, but guess what? You've still got a wall at some point. It's still five-story side, I don't care if you step it back. Nobody's talking about the shadow effect on Pear Street. 65, 70-foot building, that's going to have a shadow effect. I also didn't mention, I've been in construction my whole life, I build buildings. That's a very deceptive picture right there. An old-fashioned wood-framed home, that's about 32 feet, I bet. That building behind it's supposed to be twice that height, but it's showing that it's down. And we're talking about materials on Granite Ave. I walked up Granite Ave my entire life, going to St. Agatha's, going to the 5 and 10, going to the video store. It's really not a pedestrian walkway. You can put anything you want there. Fact is, it's six lanes of highway. It's four on the southeast, it's four on the expressway, and then whatever you want to call Granite Ave, I love the street, but it's basically a highway. Same thing on the other side. And again, I don't like to make a lot of noise, but I'm having serious problems with this parking. I built that house, it's my dream house. We live there, we love it. I understand there's going to be growing paints. I don't call the cops all the time. Once in a while, when my driveway's blocked and I can't get out, yeah, I call them. But, you know, and also the value of the project, guess what? If you can't build the number of units this gentleman is expecting, that means the value of that man's property has went down a little bit. That doesn't mean a project can't be built there that can turn a profit. You know, we all, maybe everybody has to cut back their expectation, expectations a little bit, the owner of the property, the builder. And again, again, I said I'm in the building business. I go into towns where I build an addition, and I have to have a neighborhood meeting, and I meet with people, and I explain things. I don't remember any neighborhood meetings. Also, with these Zoom meetings, me and my neighbors were trying to tune in a couple times. I'm not a computer guy, my neighbor's very smart with computers. We couldn't get in. Right now, 4th of July week, again, I'm in building. This is the best week to ever come to a town meeting. Everybody's gone. I have three neighbors that I spoke to tonight that are on vacation that are completely opposed to this development, the way it stands. That's all I have to say. But this parking thing's out of hand, the guy behind me is out of hand, he's not putting a commercial parking in my backyard. He's been doing building projects with no permits and everything else. But again, I don't like to speak until it gets to this point.
Well, thank you for coming, and please, please tell your neighbors we are going to be having public meetings. We've been having a lot of public meetings, and I know Marian has made some effort, but we, please, please have them attend. We're going to be having live and virtual, so keep in touch.
I can tell you folks right now that you're going to, the residents of Pear Street, and I can speak for 95% of them, you're going to be hearing from them, and they're not very, the way this project is right now, that they really don't like it.
Okay, well, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on the 440 Granite Avenue proposal? And you'll have to refresh me of your name. I think you've also been to Neighborhood Coalition, so I want to do a 23B3 disclosure.
My name is Jim Coyle.
And we both belong to the Neighborhood Coalition, Milton Neighborhood Coalition, or you've attended some of the meetings, I believe? Or is it, nope, I'm wrong. Please forgive me.
No, that's not me. I've been focused in, lately, I've been not focused on this project, so I may be a little bit behind on it, but public safety is my number one concern.
I'm sorry, could you put your name in the record?
No, my name is Jim Coyle. I'm a member of the East Milton Neighborhood Association, as well as a town meeting member for Pacing 7, and I live on Bunton Street, which is a little bit away from the middle of town, but it is the land of young mothers with strollers. There's, I've been there 10 years, the population is booming, I don't think the school system is ready for it at all. I think they're using the wrong planning numbers, but that's a different subject. But the main complaint I have, and I'm glad the new planning director is here, what the middle of East Milton is missing is a real, serious loaning and unloading zone. We have tractor trailers stopping in front of Abbey Park, I mean, a 55-foot-long rig there in the evening, maybe after rush hour, maybe out of courtesy. That's just one example. We have, we need to consider the thriving businesses that are out there, and I wish there was more representation from the businesses that are already there. The, and another thing, the perspective here, again, Cheryl's been working hard on the Master Plan Committee there. I think there's some things that I've heard from her that have, just haven't happened yet. We have the cart before the horse here in East Milton right now. The updated zoning with new boundaries for a really well-defined new zone, and maybe it needs multiple zones, you know, that are A, B, and C, like other, for the city of Attleboro, for example, has a central business district and multiple business districts. They're way ahead of Milton. Milton is really behind the eight ball here on planning and coordination for this tiny piece of the town here right now, which, if it was much better, well-defined, and developers could come in and build something as a variety, that needs to happen first. We're doing this the hard way here. I listened to the, what Marian said earlier there. We're doing this the hard way. We're spending way much too long a time in these planning board meetings and the zoning board, and it takes forever to get anything accomplished. For the attorneys in the room here, it must be incredibly frustrating. This does not happen everywhere. Does not happen that, I, right now, I've been in construction for 45 years, and the last few years, I've been having a lot of fun helping developers find a piece of property and get through the mechanics of getting things done, and well before you hire an attorney at all, meet with the fire department. Well, whatever you're proposing, Attleboro, Quincy, Chelsea, they have a screening checklist, I'm not sure if you have that, before they're allowed to even meet and waste the time of the planning board, they get approvals from the fire department, the public works department, the police department. Because I had the hand carry role, I just did a project in Attleboro a few years ago, about four years ago. Got it all the way approved. Before you waste the boards like this time at all, and the planning director, you do your homework, and you make sure it'll fit in the neighborhood. You meet with the neighbors, the surrounding buildings, and get the consensus, and then you go forward with the signed-off checklist. So by the time you go to the planning director, you have something that will likely fly. Attleboro's would be a good example from Milton to Copperland. It has really stacked zoning there right now, and it's quite easy to get through the whole system there. Much, this is the hardest one I've ever seen. I've done projects in Chelsea and Quincy and Attleboro in the last 15 years here now, nowhere near the problem that Milton has. Milton is its own worst enemy right here now, and I hope with Tim being on board here now, and this team gets together and improves the entire process. That's the problem, really. We've got a lot of good, smart people here on...
Do you have some thoughts on this project tonight?
Yes. Well, I have, number one here is, is the, it's going to be, have you had a face-to-face meeting with the fire department yet?
Yes.
And I've been looking into that a little bit here. I would give an example, like, in Hingham, they had to go buy, buy a million-and-a-half-dollar fire truck to get to the taller buildings. And two other towns did. I think it was Hanover, and there was another one, that have dumped, in the last few years have gone to do that. We're planning to build a fire station, and right now, is it the right one anymore? With this one and other ones that might come along? Maybe not. Maybe that whole plan was wrong. That would be a shame. So the other, the north boundary of this project here right now, I think, how are you ever going to build this thing here? There was one commenter I heard at a previous discussion about, well, they're going to get space from Citizens Bank to build this place. I don't think so. That's not realistic at all. You can't even, there's 2,000 cars an hour going along Granite Avenue from previous traffic studies out there. It's the busiest, Granite Avenue is the busiest road in all of Milton, period, and Bassett Street is a closed second. And Adams is just incredibly busy here. We need to, and the parking on, at all, on Granite Avenue is unrealistic, very unrealistic in what's been presented here tonight. People, right, if I want to drive to Citizens Bank, sometimes you got, you can't park on the street. You're going to go, parallel park backwards into the busiest traffic ever in all of Milton? I don't think so. People are going to end up doing, they're going to get frustrated. I think this project, if it goes ahead, it needs to have off-street parking absolutely for the employees. it needs to have off-street parking absolutely for the employees. You might have six, 10, 12 employees that work in these retail shops there. And their delivery van for a flower shop that you showed, that'd be nice to have. But the, the, the parking needs to be off the site. I mean, off, off the roads. And then, the other thing that's incompatible here right now is stressing bicycles. Who's going to ride a bike, we're coming off Exit 9 from the highway and the merging traffic from Willard Street? It's like, it's like crazy just trying to do that. The people that have been here long enough go all the way around through Quincy and come in the side door. They don't go on that road at all. And right now, to go to Citizens Bank, you're not going to park on the street. You're going to pull into parking lot because they still have one. This project for the retail portion alone needs off-street parking. Parts of South Boston have changed their whole premise there right now. There was development that one of my friends lives there on O Street and, um, P Street and Second Street. Developer there had to cut their project from 32 units to 16 underground garages. South Boston is now into, anything new, off-street parking, period. Do not count on anything on-street. Any new projects in Milton need to do the same. The other things related to this too here is Milton, the zoning code was, I got a good education in this listing to some of the people in this room here, that it was 1939, it was written, never really seriously updated at all yet. Fix that first and stop wasting people's time, including your own. And I think some of the people here would agree with that. I mean, it, it, it's like agony getting simple stuff done. Time to end that. That's, anyway, but, and the construction safety. You're not going to build it. You need a, a big perimeter on the north side of the street. You need full access all the way around. I think that little strip there is just totally unworkable. I would bring the project, shrink it from, if you build something there, have 15, 20-foot perimeter all the way around. You need that. I see the sidewalks would be closed on, on Mechanic and Granite for a while, and then maybe with some construction tricks, you can build this thing from the, from the middle somehow. But that's not going to be easy. Those, what about the deliveries, with your vehicles? Where are the people going to park the construction workers to work there? And there'll be a lot of them. Anything to speed, you might have 20, 30, 40, 50 people at times and they're of all different trades working there simultaneously. Where are they going to park? There's no parking. It all comes back to the parking. And a large number of special permits that have been given out over the last 60 or 70 years here now without assigned real parking. There is a huge, and that's, it all comes down to the parking and with, and with, you know, we can't keep double-dipping here. Cars just don't disappear. People have more cars than ever, it seems like now. I live a few blocks off Adams. Just cars, you can't even get down your own streets anymore. And I'm sure it's much worse on Mechanic and Pierce, as we heard here tonight.
Can we ask for quiet in the audience?
And anyway.
Quiet in the audience while, while he wraps up.
All right. Anyway, I, I, I've got more things on my list, but that's enough. So, good luck to Tim here. I, I hope you get in there and find us a loading zone somehow. And that'll get a lot of the trucks out of the way.
So we, we do have the Traffic Commission working on, looking at a Franklin Street loading zone. Um, there's, there's a few things that need to be worked out legislatively with that, but they are, they are looking into that possibility. So I know that's an issue.
I'll talk to you that.
And it's good, it's good to finally see you in person. I, I hear your voice every week.
Get back to my other assignment.
We'll see you next week, Mr. Coyle.
See you all, all right.
Thank you.
If there is a meeting, we'll see.
Yep. Okay. Did the applicants want to do any closing remarks? I feel like this is.
Did I just mention something, Adam Chair? Is it, it was a practice of the zoning board to mention correspondence that the planning board has received, or the zoning board had received? And we haven't mentioned the fact that we did get three letters from members of the public in support of the project, and I think that should be mentioned.
Okay, I don't have them. We normally try to summarize them quickly for the public, so maybe at our next hearing, we could do that.
It's Dick Burke is one. The town engineer also submitted a letter. Charlene Mulhern and Elizabeth Thill are the three letters that were submitted.
I thought that we also heard from Elaine Benson.
We might have, but I, I found those already.
But maybe that was verbal.
I said, under normal circumstances, I mean, it said the ZBA, we always mention when we get.
No, we absolutely should. I, I.
The, the thing that I'll also just like to point out is that when it lasts over multiple meetings, the people who spoke at the beginning don't always come back to speak again. So it's good to kind of recap everything we've heard, you know, not just the ones we've, we hear towards the end of the, the hearing. So, because there were people who spoke with issues and with support and various comments. I, it's good to have the summary.
Okay. And did you want to speak to 440 Granite Ave?
Well, I just, I'm very interested in those letters of support and whether or not those letters were written by neighbors or people who didn't have a stake in that specific area.
Are they in our folders?
They're in our folders.
So I forward them along to you all whenever I get them immediately. I have them upstairs. We can put them into the materials folder for next time.
Sure.
Most were not, because I was, I was looking at the address. One is on Granite Ave, but a different area further down on Granite Ave.
And I will try to summarize those letters at a, at an upcoming public meeting, so you can get a sense of the gist of, of them.
Yeah, I, having been on the Board of Appeals for many years and then serving, appearing before the Board of Appeals and in other communities as well, it is typical that the planning board doesn't necessarily read them, but I, you know, you can't do anything about it tonight and you shouldn't because it's far too confusing. There probably, there are a number of letters that have been submitted. I probably haven't seen them all. I think when a letter is submitted, the planning board should acknowledge that a letter has come from a, a person at a certain address. You can either summarize it or you can read it. But to not do anything with it, it's part of the record.
I think we always do. I'm not sure that we, we haven't not done it yet.
So, I mean, I just don't.
We're still in the middle of the hearing.
I just didn't know what your procedure was, honestly, because we haven't had them yet.
Neither did I, so that's why I mentioned it.
Yeah. So anyway, it's not, it's up to the planning board how they handle it.
For what it's worth, I think we always do.
We always do. We just had.
We haven't done it yet, and I mean.
But we will.
We always do, yeah.
Yeah, usually, well, let's just say when I was chair the last couple of years, and we, we would acknowledge them, not always read them, because some of them are pretty long.
Yes.
Yeah, some are red, some are red.
We'd summarize or some red, it depends.
Yeah, it depends on.
So that's just background. And, but there was something else I was going to.
Okay. Is there anything else that the applicant wanted to quickly?
I'm just trying to think, I mean, obviously.
I have a question for Marion, related to comment. I don't believe we've heard from anyone who lives on Mechanic Street. Have you spoken directly with residents on Mechanic Street and have they given you feedback?
We have, but not for a while. You know, one of the problems with this process has been the Zoom meetings, honestly. Before we went into the public, what, what would be nice with this type of situation? What would have been nice and what doesn't seem to happen is you can't, you can't just have an informal meeting with the planning board to talk about these things, because then the question becomes, well, if it's an informal meeting, then, you know, do people know about it? Do they have a chance to come in and comment? It's not really a public hearing. So the procedure, and I acknowledge that it may be the necessary procedure, is, you know, we have a meeting, we had meetings prior to starting this process, the site plan hearing process. We did, we did, it was all, the most recent ones have all been on Zoom. And it is indeed frustrating for many people to deal with the Zoom context. We did have the Neighborhood Association meeting. We got excellent, interesting comments. We tried to, we sent back written responses to those comments. But it's just not the same as being in the room and having the exchange. We did have some of that in the very beginning, but we didn't have a final design at that point.
Can I ask you a question on that? I'm sorry.
So, in, in, not recently, and, and we certainly will. And I think really, Mechanic Street's a very short street. There are only a few neighbors. We have had direct contact with certain of them more recently. It's just such a small number of people. I think you need to look at probably a little bit wider.
Yeah, it's just that the.
But, yeah, Alan. Early on, we did meet with the, with the abutters. So we met with them initially before we really had much of anything. Just telling them we're thinking of doing something here and just getting their feedback. And, and then we met with them again. So we met with them twice in person. And then we met, as Marion described, with the Neighborhood Association. But those were all on Zoom. But we did have the initial meetings in person with the abutters.
And what was their feedback, generally speaking?
I, I feel like they did attend one meeting and there was something about, at that point, they were thinking about changing it from a one-way to a two-way street and I feel like that.
There was discussion about that in the beginning, we heard, and the Traffic Commission heard. It wasn't support for that, so we simply didn't pursue it. It's interesting, because we then heard later from someone on Pierce Street that maybe that was a good idea. But, you know, anyway, there are many issues. Look, what's very difficult about this process is exactly what your last speaker said. He said, we don't have any zoning yet. We've been looking at the planning process. We've been trying to, we've tried to be informed by it. The property is available. The developer's looking at it. He has come up with a plan and he's tried, we've tried to follow what we've learned from listening to the Barrett report to the best of our ability and based on the site and based on the economics of the development. All of the problems that are, that are raised by the neighbors, including parking and traffic, are existing problems and they are definitely real. And that's one of, these are some of the things that makes this such a difficult site to develop. I'm, I can't, I, I, I will go back over my notes and I always try to provide a follow-up memo that goes to the planning board and I hope gets put on your website. And so that ends up, I hope, as a response, at least in part, to some of the comments that we've heard tonight. But I will say this. I hope the planning board continues to work on its zoning proposal for the East Milton Business District, because it is very difficult to function this way. And this is not the first project I've had to pursue on two fronts with zoning variances, which, because of the way our zoning has evolved, or hasn't evolved in Milton, but was written so early, it, it becomes necessary to create your own development plan and to come up with something that you think will work, will work, and then you have to work with neighbors. But it's really very confusing. It's extremely time. It raises the temperature and I think people have been actually pretty good about this. You know, I, I hear the comments and some, and there are certainly critical comments. I really do appreciate the continued discussion. I think this is the, this is the best, it's much better to have face-to-face, if possible, than public hearing in a room. It is different. We do, we are available all of the time, so we will meet with any neighbors who would like to meet with us. We'll meet with Pierce Street and Mechanic Street together, maybe. We'll see if we can work out some of the concerns that have been expressed tonight.
May I make a suggestion relative to that? There were some comments about the shadow study.
Yes, I was going to address that.
I'm familiar with the software that's used to create the shadow studies and, you know, they're, they're accurate and they're relied upon by all communities. And so I think maybe you could run through the analysis. Maybe they're not as readily understandable to everyone on a small screen or on what you find on the website, you know, so maybe you, you can run through it, because they don't reach Pierce Street. The shadows don't reach Pierce Street. And I think we just need, there's certain things that we should just kind of make sure everyone has a common understanding of, because I think misunderstandings can cause strife too. And there's certain things that I think, you know, people who experience the parking challenges, you know, it's, and traffic challenges, it's, it's one of the reasons that the Master Plan Implementation Committee a couple of years ago suggested that the town allocate $150,000 to, to really tackle analysis and be able to create a model that then you can test changes in the model and it'll, it shows you what happens. So if you make something one-way, or if you remove a parking and it has more lanes, or if you reduce lanes and you add parking, what does that do? And that's a tool that helps in the planning process. COVID put that on hold because the pa, the numbers, the base information would have been wrong. It would have been, you know, based on COVID instead of, you know, realistic situations. So, you know, the, I think people, at least I heard, since I've been involved in planning initiatives now for a number of years, I heard that people say in East Milton that they need basic quality of life, things addressed before new things come along. However, as a planning board, we can't say no because there's enforcement challenges or that there's loading hasn't been addressed properly. Property owners have property rights and so we're doing the best that we can to allocate for resources to be spent to analyze and make suggestions. I know Tim's working on it. And, and we keep asking, where are things? Where's that analysis on the traffic, et cetera? And, and I know I keep asking, what are we doing now with the Barrett report? You know, so, because I heard years ago, when people, when Falcone's were first talking about their property, how we, the planning board needed to be involved in planning in East Milton. And it frustrates me too, how long it's taken to get that, because I don't see myself being on the board forever and I like to see some progress on things. Because it, it's frustrating for everyone. It's frustrating for the neighbors. It's frustrating for development teams. And it's frustrating for all of us and frustrating for our staff. So everybody has to, I guess, you know, be respectful of each other's frustrations and try and channel them to something that we can come to an agreement on. So that's.
While I have a breath in, in your wonderful speech, this was only the first topic on our agenda, so I would like to rush along. I'm very glad that we all did have a good opportunity to talk. There will be more public hearings. And I just want to thank everyone. And we're 22.
I just have an ask. And I don't know if, if you had an ask in it, but you had mentioned about the view from the other direction. Can we get a rendering of that?
I would like to, yes.
From which direction? On the other side of Granite Ave?
Well, all we're seeing right now is two sides. And I'd like to see it from.
Along from like Boulevard Street, I think that was the.
Yeah.
Boulevard Street.
When you're coming, yes, crossing over.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was standing in that overpass right there, the fire station.
Left and making immediate right. I don't know whether you're even going to see this building.
So, well, regardless, I personally would like to see, like, pretend if you were on the other side of the highway looking across. And if you were near the fire station, out maybe across the street, looking down at it, it would really be good to see.
Okay, I, I have those too. And you can always also send, if you think of other things.
Perfect.
You should communicate them with us. We, we have some ability to do those renderings. It takes a little while to get them, because they, they, they're really done very carefully and they are done to scale, even though sometimes things look a little odd, you know, the size of the truck and that kind. So we do want to do them carefully, but we, I've written those two down. I did want to add that, you know, just for everyone to be aware, that we have met and have been meeting with the fire department. Uh, the fire chief and the assistant to the fire chief toured the parking facility to be familiar with this type of structured parking that we were talking about. And they are in close contact with the Boston Fire Department, because they have a number of buildings that already have this type of parking. It's actually regulated as an elevator system, but they are thinking of, you know, they're working on new regulations. So it's being closely monitored for all aspects of safety, efficiency, and so forth. So we do do that. We have our own engineer who, and, and we are going to be doing, there is going to be a peer review of drainage. All of this requires a close integration of the engineering aspects of the project and the town's review. And, and finally, very good, interesting points made about the difficulty of conducting construction on the site and how are you going to do it. We have to have a satisfactory, not necessarily for site plan, but we need a construction management plan. And that's being worked on, but there are a lot of details and some of the things that your previous speakers mentioned are part of that. These are the issues. So it's not, it's not an easy site.
No, it's very difficult.
It's particularly difficult to go about it this way, except that it seems to be the way that's happened in Milton. I would really love to see it happen a different way. And I appreciate the efforts of the planning board to move in that direction. So, thank you for your patience and for the time that you gave us tonight.
Okay, thank you so much.
I'm glad there's a mandate for rezoning. A lot of ideas.
You and others used to say.
Until we get moving on it.
We vote if we go past 10 o'clock.
Yeah, we have to do that.
Back to those days.
Yeah, we have to do that. But we do have members of the public.
No, I understood.
One topic. When I was town council and had to go to zoning and go to meetings, and as soon as you started talking about, oh, we can get through this and whatever.
No, I know. And I just feel like, you know, Zoom was one thing, and I probably shouldn't feel like this, because my family hated me for it, but I don't want to be here till 11 o'clock. And I, I don't feel bad saying it.
That's totally fair. Okay, so, um, our next, our next topic is the.
Shall we close it?
Tim, where did the clock go? Do you know?
I know, I was wondering the same thing.
I used to like looking at the clock.
It's lying down on the top of that cabinet in the back.
We'll have to get the clock back.
Our next topic is a discussion of the zoning proposal for the Memory Care Center at 111 Highland Street. So it's okay with the board, because it's almost quarter of 10, I would love to get the applicant to come up and do their presentation and then we'll. we'll talk a little bit as a board afterward and we'll open it up to the public and the applicant would have an opportunity to respond. So if you could help us in keeping it going because I'm going to lose a couple people.
We just discussed having a very brief discussion.
Thank you.
You know, there are people there that want to speak to you as well. We've been there all night. They say the line is all, what you gave it was all, you're sitting for a long period of time, so, anyway. We've done, a couple of quick updates.
They can't hear in the back.
First thing is that we-
Is it loud or not?
Yeah, no, but you speak up to, they can't hear in the back.
They can't hear you in the back.
That's her.
This doesn't-
Ah, yeah.
Let me, let me stand up and I'll project a little better.
That's great, if you don't mind.
I'm happy to. I am accused by my wife all the time of not speaking properly, so.
I get the opposite.
Just a quick, I think what we'd like to do is spend a very short amount of time tonight. It's late and we don't want to, we don't want to belabor, we want to be as responsive as we can to comments and questions that you may have, but I'll give you a quick update of things that we've done. We responded to the board's request to open up to a broader audience. Last night, we saw the hospital put out an invitation to folks on all of Spafford and all of Buckingham and a broader neighborhood. We had five or six new folks at a meeting last night, others who called in, and we'll be back with them in two weeks. So we are opening it more broadly. We today managed to stake the Bacardi property line, which is the property line, Karen Bacardi, who's directly abutting the property, and the corners and the midpoints of the buildings. And we have a stake reclaim that we just did get middle of today before we did Tim. It's part of the presentation. We were out yesterday with Steve Ives, who's the town's conservation agent, and inspected the flags that had been put out for the wetland delineations. We're on with the Conservation Commission Tuesday night for both the approval of the wetland delineation and for permission to conduct some test pits so we can start to evaluate the soils. And I spoke with John Kiernan earlier this evening about potential joint site walk with the Planning Board, if the Planning Board would like to do that, maybe next Saturday.
Okay.
The-
Do you have a time for that?
Right now, I could say 9 o'clock. The, I asked John whether he thought they would, they always conduct site walks before they close hearings and they generally often close hearings during the site walk and then vote orders of conditions. And they like to do it as quickly as possible after the Tuesday evening event. So the logical time would be next Saturday. He said, subject to them having a quorum for Saturday, he'd push for that.
Okay.
But he won't know until Tuesday night, whether they have a quorum. Certainly, this board would have to post that as a meeting yourselves, but we think, we're open to 9 o'clock on Saturday if that works. And we'll certainly be available for you and for the neighborhood as well.
So 9:00 AM on the 17th is a-
Yeah.
Do it?
No.
I'm out of town. You're out of town?
Yeah. Whoever can go, I think should go.
Okay.
Yeah, we could.
If you have a quorum, you won't have to post it.
Yeah, we, well-
I'm out of state, so I definitely won't be there.
I can make it. Can you make it on this Saturday at 9? It's 17th at 9? It's a tough one. So it'll just be me and Kathleen. You don't have to post it. If Kathleen can make it. If she can't make it, it's just me?
Yeah.
I'll take notes and report back.
Is Friday a possibility?
No, no, the Concom does it.
They're doing that, yeah.
Always on Saturdays, okay. Yep, all right.
Yeah, I could do it.
You could do it?
Totally.
Okay. 9:00 AM is what the rating is.
I'll try, I'll try.
Okay.
But if you don't have to, if you don't, if there's two of us-
Okay.
Then you're open.
But if you, if you think you can make it, if you think you have 50/50, you can make it, we'll post it.
Great, I'll let you know.
Thank you, thank you.
Maybe if we just went through, quickly through a set of slides. And difficult to see, but this is the, this is the plan that we filed for the request for approval of the wetland delineation. There is a permitted stream that comes through here.
I'm just trying to make it bigger.
Ah, okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I find that it's easier if you actually do the download rather than try and do it off of the OneDrive. For next time, Julia.
We have copies, paper copies.
Yeah.
And we've provided copies yesterday to the neighborhood and provided to the Dropbox that we have that's available for folks to sign into. So, and we showed this last night to the neighbors. So, this is Highland Street. This is Spafford Road. This is the existing driveway into the property. The wetlands flags, this is a wetland along the frontage of Highland. It comes through behind an old house that was taken down. There's a pond here and there's a separate wetland that comes in from the Winter Valley, Winter Valley property in this direction and they sort of meet there. This red line on each side is the 25-foot no disturb line. Everything upland on either side is available for development.
I'm sorry. You said everything upland is available for development, but you have a number of things. I'm looking at this one.
Yep.
Are you getting to that? I don't want-
I'm getting to that one.
Okay, I'll wait till you get to that one.
So that is the next one.
Okay, that's the next one.
So this is the red no disturb. This is the current building layout as it sits on the ground. We have, each of these notes is a, is the note of, is the location of a flag. It shows the locations of these corners. And so on Saturday, we'll be able to see how those are located. The building is all within the area that's upland, inside of the 25-foot no disturb.
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 But, but like this is, you know, that's within the 100 foot. I mean, a lot of this is within the-
Most of it's, most of it's within 100 feet.
Most of it is within the 100 foot?
That's right, which is completely acceptable on environmental-
For buildings to go into the 100 foot?
Absolutely, as long as, as long as the Conservation Commission issues condition, orders of conditions as to when and how it must be done. But it's absolutely developable property. This is the current site plan. One of these that we've done in response to concerns of neighbors and obviously for appropriate reasons is that we've eliminated the use of renderings with trees sort of drawn in on the property because they're sort of an estimate as to where trees are. There are a significant amount of trees along the Bacardi property line, but until we see the flags on the ground, don't know exactly where the property line is relative to where are the trees. And so it really wasn't fair to be showing trees that may or may not have been on the property. So we've eliminated that. This is the current plan. This is essentially what was shown before. 20-foot driveway coming in from Highland Street, a little over 200 feet to the front door, about 230 feet to the front door, a turnaround, visitor parking here. Keep going. We do cross the wetland to an upland over here with parking for employees. And emergency access only, pervious surface provided, proposed to get around the building. And that is set, the edge of that is set 15 feet currently from the Bacardi property line. So we have a lot of work to do, obviously, as we get into more details with Ms. Bacardi about how visually and physically to buffer along this side of the property. This is her house here. Next. This is a quick evaluation, turning radius for fire apparatus to come into the property and for box trucks who will be coming in and out of this loading area. We have a handful of deliveries that will come weekly. They will pull in, back into the loading area and out. All the town's fire apparatus would come in, have the adequate radius to turn around and out. They would actually back out this way if they were going to leave, you know. Next is a current plan showing potential utility connections. Right now, there is no sewer in Highland Street. There is sewer in Spafford Road, so the current plan would be to tie into sewer and pump up to Spafford and tie into it here. We do have a request to Winter Valley to consider allowing us to tie into their sewer. So we come out the other way. That would avoid significant physical disruption to the roadways associated with the installation of that sewer. And so we'll be, a couple of weeks before we know where they, that they are, but I think, you know, preliminarily, it looks like it's a possible. We did speak with Steve Ives in the field yesterday about whether there would be any environmental issues associated with that. He said, "No, no, it's a fairly simply, fairly benign crossing of a wetland. It should be okay, manageable." The next is, set of slides, is a couple of slides that show sections. So this is a section if you were standing on Winter Valley's property, looking towards Highland Street. You see the two-story, two-and-a-half story building where the, and then if you go to the right, this is Karen Bacardi's house. So the slopes down, this area is sort of, this lower level is proposed for lower than this-
You called this Winter Valley, but I think you meant-
If you were standing on Winter Valley's property-
Oh, the view from Winter Valley, because I was like-
Or this is, this is the-
View from Winter Valley.
What you'd see. So what you'd see is this. This is below this grade here. So, and we have, so we think of significance is that, is the view from Ms. Bacardi's house is that she'd be looking at a one-story structure, actually, if there's nothing visually, no visual barrier placed there. We need to obviously address that issue with her and consider it in consultation.
So, I'm sorry, are you going to regrade? Because I see a door over here. So it's not that that story, is it underground or is it that you are digging a hole in the ground and now that's the new lower level?
Some of that is-
There's a lot of cut and-
A lot of cut.
And fill, which I was going to get to.
There was a fair amount of cut and fill. Chase the hill here. But using this, this grade for visual buffering from Ms. Bacardi's house here. And there's a retaining wall that comes around and, and so the building is set down into the ground, the lower level is at a, is at a, is at a level that is below this grade.
So if I'm standing here, do I see that door or do I see the earth go up to the second story and then there's something that dips in as a retaining wall?
You'll see roughly-
Okay.
Yes. And these are other sections. They're not even, they're very difficult to see, so I'm not sure. I'm not even sure I can explain them.
But Ned, I'm looking at them on my laptop and I think what I see is, and looking at the grading plan, just so everyone can understand what these are, you're, when you come in, you have to add about 10 feet of fill for the drive. And then that would be in Section 4 because the bottom says the existing driveway is at 115 and the proposed driveway is at 125. And then it seems to me like, all right, so when I'm talking about looking at the land, you're cutting a lot into the hill and you're filling a lot down lower. And it's almost like you want to flip your building so that you're using the topography to your advantage. But it's, again, these are, this is design versus zoning.
Right.
And I just want to make sure we have time for the zoning because there's design, there's a lot of things about the design that hopefully we could get to because we're not actually proposing or approving design yet.
Aren't we just doing the zoning?
But I think it's useful to see the constraints so that it helps with the zoning. But I will say by now, this new information of the site sections and the existing topography, it does raise questions. And we just got it, you know, really, I think, yesterday or today. So there's more that I'd like to kind of dig in and understand. But I don't, that's more like what Kathleen said last time in terms of, we're actually talking about zoning, which is why I spent some time over the rainy weekend looking at the zoning. So I want to make sure we have time for the zoning tonight too, so we could talk about that.
I'm happy to pass you because this is difficult to see in any event and difficult to explain.
Yeah.
And so I'm just happy. The last slide, I think, there's two more quick slides. One is, this is parking data. And we need to shrink the size a little bit because the data is on the left-hand side. This is the Needham facility.
Can you just do that?
And we just show parking associated with the various shifts that come through. So the first shift, there's a maximum of about 30 or 35 cars on the site during the first shift. The second shift is lesser, is 20 to 25, and then the third shift is 6 to 8. So we have, you know, a shift change three times a day. There's a little bit of that coming and going traffic associated with that. There's a little bit of occasional visitors that come, handful of visitors that come during the day, fewer that come in the evening. And you have a couple of deliveries that may come during the day at different points in time. So obviously, that's more, it's data that we were asked to provide. And so we just still would provide in a quick slide. The last thing is we have the vision of a sign because we do speak in the zoning too, what a sign would look like. And that's that. But I'd rather get, I'd rather get to things that are important to the board to consider in the short time that we have.
Can we just outline what we're going to talk about tonight, just so we don't go too far all over the place?
Yeah.
Anyways, if I-
On the cars, I just want to understand. Can we just look at the parking count just because that is in the zoning too? Just, so I think that you had said that there was going to be 70 parking spaces, is that right? So how does that relate to these cars? Just quickly, because if it, if it's, the first shift is 30 to 35, you're going to have some, and then visitors are 5 to 10 and 25 staff. Okay, so if you have 35, 60, okay, 70, I got it. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so you have to have enough for the overlap.
Yeah, all right, got it. That's fine. We don't spend anywhere on it.
All right, so because we've had a lot of people waiting and it's almost 10 o'clock at night, I would like to go to the people next, if that's okay? The citizens who have been waiting for hours-
Sure.
-to speak.
Yep.
Because we want to hear, did anybody want to speak at this time or, okay. Mr. Henry, I believe.
And before Mr. Henry speaks, I will disclose that they are both members of the Abstract Club.
Fascinating. I want to hear about that one.
Kathleen is the president.
Uh-oh.
That's weird.
It's 100 real estate lawyers in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Wow.
They've got a big volleyball game against the Concrete Crew.
Yeah, it's sort of like the Drones Club, the real estate.
Thank you. Given the lateness of the hour, I'll try to be short tonight, but as you know, I represent Karen Bacardi, who lives right next door to this project. But as you know, I represent Karen Bacardi, who lives right next door to this project. She and a number of the neighbors are just very frustrated by the pace of this process, which I think is going way too fast, and by their ability to have meaningful time to review things, which, to give you a few examples, you know, her property line and the corners of the project were just staked today. And so that's the first time we've seen this. She and one of the neighbors walked it today and were sort of aghast at how big it was and how close it was to her property line. The redraft of the proposed zoning amendment, which is really what you're considering here at some level, we received it 2:00 today. So we really, I've read it, but we haven't had a chance to comment on it. So we'd like to have more time, both the neighbors and Ms. Bacardi, to consider that, to give comments on that document. And we have a Conservation Commission meeting next week. And we've just got the delineation of where the building is going to be. So that's, you know, there's a lot of stuff coming at us. And I was always taught, practicing law, that people don't remember how fast you did something, they remember how well you did something. So I think it's a good life lesson as far as going forward. You know, Karen, as I said, walked the property today. And when she bought this, her house, you know, she had expectations of living in a residential neighborhood, a zone residential next door. And in reality, if you look at the staking out there, and I'm glad that they're not going to show the trees that, that's that they may or may not be there, I can tell you they're not there. So if you look at the staking, if you do a site visit, the grass goes right to the property line. So the whole side that the hospital owns is very densely vegetated right now. But it's essentially where this is from the building, they're going to clear cut the whole property. And then they'll put in a fire road almost at her property line. And she'll have a view, not just of the one-story corner, but of the entire project from her property. There's really nothing in the way there. There's just no way, you know. So that's a big issue for her. And while her preference would be not to have this rezoned at all, to keep it residential, and as I said, I think Kathleen mentioned this last time, if, if there's a big house built next to her, she'd be happy to look at that and have them look at her. But she doesn't want to have such a large institutional use so close to her property line. And so, you know, as I said, our preference is not to have it rezoned. But if it is going to be rezoned, we'd like to see some protection on the residential side as far as setbacks go. And, you know, I know in Milton, you tend to draft new special permit sections. It's sort of reverse engineering a project. But, you know, some of your other recent ones, I think one was the Cluster Development, which is 15, and one was the Greater State Planning and Development. You know, those had open land concepts. The Greater State Planning and Development 19 had a concept of, you know, larger setbacks. There was basically a no disturbance zone on the residential property lines. I think in that case, it was 75 feet. And then there was a no roads for, I think, 125 feet and no buildings for 150 feet. And that was a much bigger site, so maybe those aren't the right numbers. But we would be, you know, at a minimum, would like to see a no disturbance zone that is more than 15 feet from her property line. And a no build zone for roads or anything, that's the next step, and then the building's being further back. And I think that, you know, as I said, we, we would prefer not to have a rezoning. But if there's going to be a project there, she shouldn't have the front row seats to the entire building. She'd like to have.
Denny, may I have a comment? Mr. Henry? Mr. Henry, I spent some time, as I said, over the weekend, the rainy weekend, reviewing the zoning. I was on the board when we wrote the Greater States PUD zoning and when we permitted the Will Cut Woods project. I added a lot of the language. It may not be quite sufficient yet, but I, I added site design standards, a lot more building design standards. I added a requirement of not building within setbacks. And so when you do get a chance to take a look at it.
Ned did at 2:11, but he did circulate to us. And it was, he did show, it was redlined and it showed your comments made and any responses that they had. So it was clear what you had suggested.
And I haven't had a chance to read their comments back yet.
But it is annotated in a way that shows.
Clearly.
I saw that you, I mean, I read it briefly and compared to others. I saw that you added that whole section and you would tweak the other sections.
I just want to call your attention to it, yeah.
More consistent with the more recent ones that were done.
Right.
So that's my, you know, I'm, I'm sure I'll see you again. But that's my shree for tonight.
Thank you.
And I mean, it's really a question of, you know, it's expectations, whether, you know, people today from East Milton said they had expectations when they moved in for a certain kind of look. And Karen had expectations, it's a, it's a different neighborhood, different type of property. But she moved into a residential neighborhood and expected it to remain residential. So that was her expectation. And I hope you consider that as you mark up this zoning proposal.
So one other thing, if I may, while Mr. Henry's here. Just again, a little bit in terms of process, since I was on the warrant committee before the planning board. And we received zoning articles from the planning board then in sort of, in thinking about timing of things. One, for us to think about zoning, we normally have two opportunities for town meeting, you know, one in the annual town meeting and one in the fall town meeting. Which is why sometimes our processes seem a bit rushed, because it could be sometime before there's another opportunity unless a special town meeting is called. And usually, they're not called just for zoning. It might be for some other reason, and then zoning gets tagged along. And so to work with that, what we've done some is, we know an article still needs further work, or, you know, an amendment still needs further work. But it's at a point at which we think it can be submitted to the select board and knowing that we'll have further hearings on it. And we have the opportunity to ask for it to be pulled back if we don't think it's ready the town, by the time of town meeting. So I just want to say that normally, we consider the time between when we submit it and we continue to work on it up to town meeting. So just.
I know the selectmen have the bill, can refer it back to you, or you can have it referred back.
We can, we can ask for it to be pulled back. We've done that. We've done that. You know, there's, I think that if it weren't for us to do it and it went as a citizen's petition, which we have no control over, then my concern would be that it takes the control from our process and puts it into the citizen petition process. And we've found that that's not as ideal, at least in, we've talked about that. In my view, it's not as ideal, but we've talked about that in general as a board, is it not being ideal? So I just wanted to just give you that bit of background from my experience.
I completely understand. I know that the developers would love to be at the fall town meeting. That's why they have this aggressive schedule. And we understand that. But as neighbors, we just, speaking for one neighbor and having heard from a number of neighbors, some others who are here tonight, they just feel that they, you know, the developers, I'll give them credit, they have reached out to the neighborhood, they've had meetings, they've had Zoom meetings, they've shared stuff. But they've shared it typically, we have a meeting the day before the planning board, so we don't really get a chance to do a deep dive and to give the kind of critical review. I mean, I was looking at the article, the proposed articles today before I saw the redraft Ned sent with your comments. And I was going to propose some language, some of the same things you did. But I figured once we had a redraft, in any way, sense, to let everyone digest that and then work off that document. Because that was what was submitted for the board.
Right.
I know the neighbors haven't really had a chance to look at it, and they'd really like to have, you know, more opportunity to review it and then come back and give additional comments.
Before you go, Tim, when is the closing of the warrant again?
20th.
And we just rescheduled our meeting to the 21st.
The 22nd.
There have been times when we add a meeting just for a particular topic, and if there's time to add one, that could be a possibility again.
I think you moved to the 20th, is that right?
Yeah, 20th or 21st.
20th, Tuesday?
Yeah.
So, let me get, again, if.
Yeah, 20th.
20th, okay.
You moved to Tuesday, the 20th?
20th, yeah.
And I guess what I might suggest, too, is to have, well, do we, do we continue the actual hearing? Do we take a vote to continue 440? I don't think we did.
I don't think we did, but I.
We didn't.
So I guess.
We didn't vote to close it either.
Well, anyway, I was going to suggest that we put this on the agenda before that, but, you know, we haven't given a time that we've continued it to.
Do it now.
We could do it now. So.
Well, so we want to continue 440, granted app, and we want to continue this one. So 7:05 for 440, granted app.
This isn't a public hearing.
This is not a public hearing, so.
So we don't have to.
So I would do this first.
Okay, so on Tuesday, the 20th, we'll continue this.
No, continue 440.
440. I don't think we have to decide that right this second, you know, with respect to these folks. But I was, the reason I was saying it was just put it first on the agenda, and it made me think, like, tonight, 7:05 was 440. But if we say that 440 is.
We'd love to have that time slot for the next meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
I think that's only fair.
7:05.
Yeah, it's only, that's what I'm trying to get at. But since we haven't given a time specific yet to the other one, I think we have the opportunity to make this one first, is what I'm trying to get at.
All right, should I vote that in? Do we, do we want to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we would continue the discussion of the.
111 Highland Street.
Highland Street zoning.
But we're not done yet, we're tonight, right?
No, but I'm just going to say that we make a motion to.
Oh, I see.
Continue it. I mean, to continue the discussion on the agenda, put it on the agenda for the next meeting on July 20th.
That would make more sense than to start a conversation at.
Yeah.
You'll also want to figure out a.
There might be more.
So do we want to do that one 10, 10 minutes later? No, an hour later?
You could, you could continue with whatever, you just can't, you can't, if you do it for 7:05, you can start it at 9:00. You just can't start it at 7:04. So that's kind of, so pick something that's reasonable and then doesn't make a difference.
Yeah, but we have to come up with this. And then we make a motion before we make a motion to adjourn, to say.
Yep.
Let's do that.
Right. I just want to make sure the others are here.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
Did anyone else, oh.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, anyone else from the public like to speak on the 111 zoning proposal for us?
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Gene Earle, 120 Highland Street. But I'm also here as a town meeting member of Precinct 9. My neighborhood has a lot of concerns about this property. And we're thrilled that the developer has marked out the building. That's wonderful, that's helpful. But we also think the parking driveway needs to be marked out, too. If you were to walk into the property, you could just get lost. Going down to Winter Valley, the grass is up to your shoulders. You, unless you have some markers, you can't tell where the parking is and what trees are coming down and that sort of thing. And so we'd like to slow this whole thing down a little bit so we can, so we still have questions from the very first meeting that we haven't gotten to. And it's so late, it's not fair to you, the viewers at home, or anybody. We have major concerns. I don't know how to do it, maybe Tim can tell me one of these days. With the Conservation Commission, there's massive hydraulic issues there, in our, in our opinion. And we want to bring in our own expert. And Northbrook, they've had plenty of meetings with my neighborhood. So far, there's no support that I know of that they've had. And secondly, we'd like to have our own meetings with you folks and our own PowerPoint presentations. And we'd like equal time as a rebuttal. So if that could be scheduled, we'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Interesting point.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can strive for more time for the community to weigh in. All of our meetings, we have to be public.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to remember that this isn't the approval of the project. So it's not the last chance that anybody has to make a comment, because we're not approving.
Yeah, let me say, I would be far, far away from saying that that is approved a project as a project. That's why I keep saying we're looking at the zoning.
I think they're just trying to say, is it appropriate to even zone for it?
We zone for all kinds of things in this town that never get built.
Well, I mean, I, if we could go to the rendering that looks kind of like this. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? I'll, I'll go after the public if I, if I could.
This isn't going to take long, because.
Oh, you take your time, Ms. Wells, right?
Ella Wells.
Ella Wells.
Town meeting member, Precinct 9.
Oh, if I could, I believe you may have been to a neighborhood coalition meeting in the past?
Yes.
Okay, I'd just like to do a 23B3 disclosure. I belong to an association named the Milton Neighborhood Coalition. I think Ella Wells has attended. So pursuant to the state ethics commission, I feel that I can hear from you at this meeting.
And I live on Highland Street, just to, I'm going to butter.
Okay.
If you see that tail on the back of the Bacardi property.
Oh, this part?
My property is the.
So you're right here?
Right here.
You're over here, so that's you?
So I'm not going to see this building.
Okay.
But I'm not concerned so much about seeing the building. I'm concerned about the wetlands there and what's going to happen. Because this, and I haven't seen it staked out yet, but I was, I wanted it to be staked out, because I had a feeling it was going to be massive. And as you can tell, it covers a good part of the 100-foot setback. I'm not a real estate lawyer. I don't know whether, that, you know, there's going to have to be a lot of conditions if that's the case. But I feel that this is the wrong building for that property. I think Evita has shown itself to be, my impression is they're a good company and they do good projects. And this could be a good project, but not for this property. I think there's too many, there's too much wetlands. We are going to try to get our own expert to give us help on the wetlands issues and the stormwater issues. But we just think this is, it is going much too fast. As, as attorney Doug Henry has said, we have gotten things the day of the meeting. We have gotten drawings the day before, when we are given a chance to have a neighborhood meeting. That's not enough time. We're facing a ConCom meeting, and, you know, we're not familiar with that. But we've been told right after that, we're going to have a Saturday onsite meeting and that that's going to close the issue in terms of what their, what their determination is. And a lot of neighbors don't know why it's going so fast. They haven't had a chance to even visit the property. And to have a decision made on Saturday is scary to them. So, you know, it's, it's a new process for a lot of the neighborhood. And as representatives of this neighborhood, Gene and I have talked to a lot of neighbors. I haven't heard one positive reaction or comment on it. So we have met with the hospital for the last decade, and we've told them, we want residential, we want a couple of houses, we don't want a huge development, we know the status of the land. So I urge the planning board to go cautiously on this. And also, I have a feeling that when putting the cart before the horse, shouldn't we be talking about design before? How can you draft bylaws when you don't even know, you know, the layout of the building? You were surprised that it's going to be in a bathtub. They're going to take cut and fill, whatever you call it. And they're going to put the building below grade in order to help the Bacardi viewpoint. But is that really what should be done to wetlands? Should the whole 100 setback be covered by property? This is, I think, and they can correct me, they can inform you later, but it's like a 50,000 square foot building on a layout. That's an acre of building, that's huge. But we'll see that when we do the sidewalks. So I just want the process to slow down, because I think maybe other properties can be looked at, maybe the horse farm can be looked at, or maybe this can be reduced. But it's, it's too huge and the, the land, I don't think, is proper for this kind of development. So I just, I'm giving you the feedback we got from our neighbors. And I, you know, that's it, because I didn't take up any more time.
Denny, do you mind? Kathleen, just on process, just for people who are watching and neighbors who might be watching, I'm going to say something about Conservation Commission, so if you want to correct me if I'm wrong. But their process is independent of ours. And they, you know, the setback of the wetlands and where the building is will be within their jurisdiction. So we can put a requirement in for setbacks from property lines from a zoning point of view, but it won't influence their decision on the wetlands part. So I just want to, it's not like the ZBA where we kind of work back and forth. ConCom kind of does its own thing.
Can, can we ask Ned to clarify precisely what the approval that they're looking for?
The wetlands delineation.
We're asking them to do two things. First is to approve the delineation of the wetlands. You know, do we, did we identify them in the proper location?
Right.
We need to know that, so that when you're designing the site, you're staying away from where you're not allowed to be. The second is, we're asking for permission to dig some test pits, so that we can get into beginning the process of evaluating the soils for building. That's it.
So you're not asking them to approve anything within the 100 feet at this point?
No, I mean, it's.
Well, we only ask. Well, we're only asking, we're asking for permission to take some test pits within 100 feet. Because we need to know what the soil...
But, so describe. The test pit is just something to see what the soil is.
It's a hole in the ground.
But who gets to double check their wetlands delineation? Why is that approved on the day they visit? Do they have proper, the right kind of people on the Concom to determine whether the wetlands are delineated?
There's a wetland officer, it's Steve Ives.
They have a conservation agent who determines that.
And do, can we ask for another, our own independent agent to come in?
No. No, because, I mean, because he's delineating the wetlands to determine jurisdiction on behalf of the Conservation Commission. So, you know, I suppose when you, when you go to doing an order of conditions, you could bring in somebody at that point to say, we think the wetlands are somewhere else. But all they're doing right now is determining, based on their research, where they think the wetlands line is. To determine whether or not they have any jurisdiction over the project at all.
So it's really key to be there on that Saturday, to talk to Steve and look at ourselves on the wetlands and argue with him at that point.
I suppose, but you know, are you going to know more about where the wetlands are?
I won't, no. No, no, not at all. But I would hope we could have our own expert there giving their opinion on it. That's all.
As if it's an open meeting, I suppose, you can come with whoever you want. But that's really all they're doing, is drawing a line to determine whether or not there are any wetlands there at all.
I think there is opportunity to question their decision within 20 or 30 days of their decision.
Twenty days.
But it would be definitely something to ask when you go to their meeting, you know, yes, about what opportunity you might have at the sidewalk to bring someone. And what are your opportunities if you disagree with their decisions? What can you do? But that's, we don't, yeah.
It's not us. I understand. But is it too early for you to be drafting bylaws if it comes to the point where they, they don't feel, they feel this is too big a project or they have to...
If they can't build on it, if the Concom says you can't build on this bigger footprint, then they can't come to us with something that Concom doesn't approve. They need two approvals. They need that independently than ours.
Well, the other thing is, we always draft zoning, we always draft zoning for things that may not, you know, Milton, of course, is a rarely rare example of a town that drafts its zoning for one specific project. But most of the towns that I've represented over the years, we draft zoning for, like, okay, office space, industrial parks, all kinds of things that may never get built. But you do draft the zoning for it, so it's there if somebody wants to use it. It's, we have this history, and I'm a town meeting member as well, of drafting zoning, you know, and going to town meeting with like a specific project in mind, which is...
So it's site-specific zoning.
Absolutely.
This is site-specific zoning, but I'm...
Well, that's the way we do it here.
Well, Tim, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to just clarify that the decision that the Conservation Commission is going to be making at this stage doesn't have anything to do with the building right now. It's almost, I mean...
It's really wetlands delineation and water test pits.
I want to actually ignore the building right now. They're looking at that red line and confirming. Now, there will be a stage after, or maybe contemporaneous with, if the zoning passes and if there's a special permit process, they'll need to issue what's called an order of conditions, which says, if you're going to be building in that 100-foot zone, these are the conditions that you need to meet in order to mitigate the disturbance of the wetlands or replicate new wetlands. Or do whatever. That is when they're concerned with the building and what can or cannot be built there.
I appreciate your explanation because I think people, our neighbors, will be listening to this tomorrow. And so they wanted to have this information. And I think they are going to be curious to come on Saturday. And I think the more people that come to see the project will be helpful for the whole neighborhood.
Yeah, but I mean, as I said, it's just, doesn't have anything to do with the building. And as Tim said, there'll be an order of conditions. I mean, if they come forward, there'll be an order of conditions that Concom will be doing. It can have 20 pages attached to it of things that need to be addressed.
I guess my concern may be similar to the neighbor's concern. And that is that we don't, we don't know where the wetlands lines are necessarily. We have a rough idea from Ned. We don't know if Concom is going to say, you actually do have enough space to do this kind of footprint, even if it's a rough idea. So, we don't know. And we're not going to know until a week from Saturday, possibly. And it could be challenged for 30 days. We don't know. I feel like we're jumping ahead trying to write zoning. Because we don't, we just don't know. I feel like we should actually, you know, cross a couple Ts, dot a couple Is before we, you know, sit down, you know...
But you won't know with the wetlands delineation. Because you, you know the wetlands delineation, but you don't know. It's like somebody's saying, well, I want to have X, Y, and Z, but they don't apply for a building permit. So you don't know.
So why are we zoning if it's never going to happen? I understand you said we can.
It sounds like a waste of time.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I was just saying, take it once every time. It's all good. Government, you know, moves slowly. We're deliberative body. Let's dot some Is, let's cross some Ts. We don't do the fall meeting. Let's aim for February, let's aim for, it's all going to be good. You know, somebody asked earlier, what's the rush? And I don't quite understand the rush. I'd much rather, you know, take our time and not be trying to do something at 10:30 at night, trying to rush it through so that we can get it to town meeting.
We're not voting tonight anyway.
No, we're not voting tonight. But the next week, there's going to be great pressure on us to vote and whether or not...
But we still have, it's all we're doing is, we should be telling the Board of Selectmen, please put on a warrant, space for this article.
Okay, so that's one opinion. And I don't, I don't know if I agree with that because I think that we don't necessarily want to reserve space if we don't have a couple more Is dotted and many more Ts crossed.
We have, I don't think we should, we should decide tonight on that, Danny, because we have time.
Yeah, can we hold it till next?
And can I just, I just want to say...
But I also think it's okay to...
Remember about the zoning is that we shouldn't write zoning around a particular piece of property's wetlands considerations. Because that will control it on its own. What we need to do is write zoning based on other considerations and other protections. And the site planning that was done, for example, at Walcott Woods helped to inform the Greater Estates PUD. But that site plan changed between the time the zoning was written and the time we issued our special permit. And in some ways, it changed quite a bit. And it changed right up until the day of town meeting when the zoning was voted. And then it changed a couple times with amendments afterwards. Because when we write zoning for such a specific project, we had to change it for 131 Elliott. We had to change it for the Ice House. The only way that this assisted living zoning would work is if it was on one parcel where, for one particular operator, on one, and that was it. So every, we say we need assisted living in town, and then we make it almost impossible to do it. And so zoning really is, whether this site is the right site for it or if it's another site, the zoning should set it out such that it can go on a different site.
Right.
And, you know, the idea would be put in enough protection. So like having no roadway within a certain distance of the property line provides a protection because, and a no disturb zone provides a protection. Because if there are trees in that area and you can't disturb them, that's what provides those nice buffers and protections. It, so, and that will go beyond the Concom's work. Because if it's upland, then they're not going to be concerned about it. So, you know, I think there was a lot of protections put into the Greater State PUD, which is why I suggested at our last meeting, we look at it, which is why I went back and looked at it again. Because we added those provisions about roadway setbacks. Because we were concerned that when this plan got really worked on in more engineering detail, that that, they might get pushed closer to the property line. And so, like, by the time we're done with the zoning, we won't know exactly if this, the way they've configured this will work. I think from a design point of view...
Maybe it could be moved to someplace else.
From a design point of view, it's, you know, to design it before they've got the wetlands and before they've got the topography worked out and everything is a little risky too. Because it's like, you know, you're not working with the site necessarily. So I guess my, my point is, we should think about the zoning and what protections can be put in. If we think assisted living and memory care deserves to be someplace in town. Town meeting agreed it deserved to be someplace in town, whatever, six years ago, eight years ago, that it was adopted. And it has to only be done if there's enough protection put in place.
Okay, so we have a template that Ned's brought us from another property. So that template exists. Great Estates was used by Carberry very quickly afterward. It had public support going in at every various stage. It did have the public support. There were a lot of Is dotted and a lot of Ts crossed. And I know we did make tweaks along the way. But, but boy, when it went on that, that, you know, that list for the select board, it was 85, 90% tied up. I mean, it was in good shape.
But the thing, Danny is...
And then there were tweaks, but that's fine. And I don't mind tweaks. But I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, I agreed with Mr. Henry when he said, you know, 15 feet and then no build. I don't know. I mean, I'd like to see 100 feet. And then even buildings further back, I'm sorry, no build and no pavement. If I look at this footprint, you can't really move it without hitting wetlands.
Right, so, yeah, but...
So we can't do this.
No, no, no. You're assuming that you're writing the zoning for that design. I'm assuming you're writing the zoning that makes sense and they're going to have to revise their design.
Okay, which, which if we had, if we had all the time in the world, but we have 10 40Bs in town, I would be, I would love to spend our evenings thinking of ways to strategize and help steer the 40Bs in a positive direction like we did.
But 40Bs aren't our jurisdiction.
I know, but the zoning board of appeals, they're going to be calling on us, asking for our feedback. And I would like to be available to do that. You know, I, I agree in principle, it would be great to sit and work on bylaws. But we have limited time and we have limited resources. And I just think, slow and steady, dot every I, cross every T, get it in a good place. Before we reserve a place on the warrant, let's have it in good shape. And let's say, yeah, and we have a site where it's going to work, at least one in town.
So may I make a suggestion? Because as I said, I worked on those, that zoning, and I worked on, I spent hours on it over the weekend reviewing everything. And I would like to run through why I think that the things that have been edited and added will make this zoning much better and stronger. In the meantime, I would like to hear from Mr. Henry in his review of the zoning and if he has further comments. And we see where we are at our next meeting. I don't think tonight is the right...
Right.
Everybody hasn't had a chance to analyze that zoning. And I think it worked quite well. When, when we permitted Walcott Woods, the zoning achieved what we were trying to achieve. It built in the protections. And so it's not, every piece of zoning does, has the same kind of variables. It has how much you're going to build, where you can build it, what are your protections, right? So if you trust the tools in the zoning, which I'm saying like the Greater Estates tools worked, you can apply your lessons learned, right? So it's not like a Milton Village, which is a completely different kind of district. But there's not such dissimilarities between this property and the Walcott Woods property. What's different is the proposed use. But the protections for what you're doing with that property, the tools are very much the same from a zoning point of view. Concom adds in a different level. And it did, it added a different level. As you may recall, we didn't have anything to do with what, what they did with Concom in terms of where they could build relative to Concom. That was, they told us that this is what Concom told them. And that's what we had to accept in this, when we were doing the special permit.
Sorry. Was there anybody else first?
Yes. Is there anyone else? I'm sorry, Ella, were you done?
No, I appreciate this because it's going to be very good for our neighborhood to hear this. And I appreciate the comments that everybody has made. But I do agree that it's going much too fast. I haven't had a chance to even look at the bylaws yet. And I'm an attorney and I'd like to comment on them. But, you know, I haven't had a chance. So it really, it has to slow down for everybody to have, to really take a look at this.
I haven't had a chance to read it myself either, to take a really good look. Have you had a chance?
No, I have a comment, but I just want to make sure nobody else.
Thank you.
Did anyone else from the public, would you like to join us?
I was just going to say that I think I was...
Can you, can you come to the table and introduce yourself, please?
Georgia, you need to identify yourself for the record.
I was just going to say, I'm going to circle back because I think we're going to meet again.
We are going to meet, okay.
And I took a lot of notes. And thank you, everybody. And thanks, Jim and Wendy, for being here and engaging the neighbors in a dialogue, a productive dialogue. And I'll come to the next one.
And Georgia, are you in a butter to the property or you're a butter to a butter?
I'm a neighbor two doors down.
Two doors down, okay. And Georgia Lee Highland Avenue. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay.
I do.
Okay, please.
So, no, and I don't want to go far because I think it'd be better if we talked about this next meeting. But, so I agree with what we're talking about with the neighbors and those opinions. But I think what I'm hearing is, like, I'll say it this way. Cheryl, what you're saying is, kind of what Jim Coyle was saying, you're saying, let's zone for the use, not specific, not spot zone here, but let's talk about zoning. So that it could be used here or other places. I mean, I like the idea of that. And so, but we do have something in front of us. As long as we're going about it this way, you know what I mean, in stepping back and doing it appropriately. I mean, I like the idea of continuing the conversation. It has something to do with my next question. But my next question, at some point, I'd like to know, like, what is the state of this, like, property? What could be built right now there? Like, could something be built or could anything be built?
Well, it's owned residential and it would have to, you know, be on the dry land.
Could, you know, Ned come back in two weeks from now and say, you know what, we didn't get this, so I want to build...
The president of the hospital...
I want to build something bigger.
President of the hospital, I think, commented that at one of our meetings, that they received multiple offers in their...
Well, that's my question. What else could be built if somebody else buys it and builds? Because one of the things I will say, and I'm not a neighbor over in Randolph Avenue anymore, but I had a house over there. And when the, the corner of Reed'sdale and...
The hospice?
The hospice went in, they're, at least for me, when I was there, they were great neighbors. Because it's quiet, there's not a lot of, you know, action going on in and out. And it's not loud. But that's the neighbor you want, like, for, like, I'm talking personally now. That's the neighbor I want. Because it's, you know, it's nice. These types of facilities seems to check that box for me, too. I wouldn't mind living near this because it's not a mall. It's not, you know, something where lots of noise is going to go on, I would imagine. This not East Milton Square, where you're going to have massive trucks parked in the middle of the road, you know, your issues are, you know, turns and all that, I get. But, so, yeah, I love the idea of keeping, talking about this. But I appreciate all the things that we need to worry about.
No, and I'm happy to talk about it and happy to continue. I just don't feel the need to, you know, rush it, you know, before we get a few things in order.
No, I agree. I just worry about, the other side of this is if we kicked it off too far, what then happens if the property owner decides, you know what, I want to sell it if I can't do this?
They're going to have, they're going to have the same problem.
They're going to have the same situation.
But then, so the neighbors should know that. What could happen?
Any number of things.
Yeah.
You could have a Dover amendment use, you could have a 40B use, you could have a...
Yeah. And that would be, you know, then you're not digging a hole and making it visible by this. You're seeing this.
I mean, Milton Hospital said they have no plans to do a 40B.
Well, yeah.
But, I mean, but...
No, I get it. I get it. I'm not trying to scare anybody. I'm just saying, I personally would have wanted to know the use. And I think I'm capturing that right now, so.
I think if I just, what I understand of their hospital selection process is they received quite a number of significant proposals. They selected this one because they perceived it to be very low impact, to fill a significant need in the town for memory care services. That the nature of the memory care is such that there's almost no traffic. Because 70 occupants don't drive. And they get occasional visitors and there's, and there are shift changes. But otherwise, it's a quiet, high-value, low-impact use. And they thought that the use, that this use as opposed to another assisted living proposal, which was much bigger, not for memory care, was, this was more consistent with what their perception of what would fit here. And they made a, they made a selection they thought was, met that combination of things. It was a high-value return for the hospital, obviously. And it's a new taxpayer for the town.
Did you provide us with an estimate of the taxes, by the way?
We can. I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head. I know it's more than a couple hundred thousand dollars. But it's, right now, the property's taxed as a vacant lot, residential use. Because it's not being used by the hospital for its tax-exempt purpose.
Let me get to know.
But we can get that information.
Sorry, I didn't mean to make a, I'm the one that wants to go home.
I know, I know.
But, so, you know, I happen to agree with the hospital and its selection. I think it is low-impact, it is benign. I understand that the pace of this is what it has been laid out to be. We're trying to do our best to keep up. And we'll work as hard as we can to be as responsive as we can. We think that, we at least think that we, the process should have the opportunity to run itself out through October, the way... run itself out through October, the way often property, the zoning matters have happened in Milton.
It's actually the preference of town meeting to have zoning articles in the fall. I was on the warrant committee when the chair of the warrant committee requested the fall town meetings for zoning because the warrant committee is so busy with budget articles in the spring. And there is some grumbling sometimes from warrant committee when we.
There was, and there wasn't the annual meeting.
When we submit substantial zoning articles for the annual meeting.
So we're committed to work as hard and as close as we can. If October comes and it's not well enough baked, you know, we'll continue our conversations with the planning board, but we're, we're confident that we can get to a good outcome, and we look forward to working with you. So I appreciate the fact that you'll take us early in the next meeting.
I think that would be good.
And we look forward to a good dialogue that night, so thank you.
And I'll just make a request since I will be phoning in if there are any visuals, if they, if they could be put in our box so I can be following along.
They're always in the box, Cheryl.
They're always in the box. Okay, thank you, Tim.
Okay, so anyone from the public want to talk, or are we good? Okay, we'll see you next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for staying.
So it's Tuesday, Tuesday, the 20th is the next.
Yes.
Yes, 7:05.
Motion to adjourn?
No, 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 we have to continue.
Oh, you need to continue.
Continue the hearing on 4:40.
Yes, okay. Did you want to make a motion, Kathleen, before we forget?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on 4:40, Granite Avenue, July 20th at 7:00. Just a second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And you'll convey that to Marion.
If you folks could maybe step outside in the hallway if you're going to be talking, thank you.
All right.
Danny, did you want me to just spend 90 seconds?
If it's 90 seconds.
Yeah.
Or not?
No, I want, please, 90 seconds, go.
Okay, so just by way of an update, I sent you some information on the 648, 62, Can't Get a 40Bs.
Yes, thank you.
There was, so that, that public hearing is, thank you.
Do I need to leave the room? Since I'm recused?
I think you can hear.
Yeah, actually, Cheryl, yeah, sorry.
Oh, that's, okay, thank you.
Cheryl's been recused from discussions of that. I'm sure if she didn't say anything, we would be fine, but she's got the ability to leave the room, she should leave the room.
Okay.
So that hearing has been continued until September. There's been a significant redesign of that project. Everyone should, I think, be familiar with that. There was a request on the part of the Board of Appeals to get some clarity from Mass Housing, which is the subsidizing agency for this 40B project, as to whether or not the project was still eligible under their criteria. Mass Housing has been doing that review for the past several weeks, and they just came out with a letter basically acknowledging the project change, and their determination was that, because it's adding area to the project, reducing density of the project, it didn't constitute what they would consider to be a substantial change under their regulations. And the reason, substantial change means a very specific thing in this case. I mean, it is a substantial change to the project, but because it came about as a result of the public hearing process and changes that were made at the request of the board and of residents and of the peer reviewers, that Mass Housing position in these situations tends to be not to, for lack of a better term, meddle in the local approval process. And to let that process go through, they have in their kind of review process, a sort of a second bite at the apple. They, they get the bite at the first stage, at site approval, and then they get what's called final approval, to see any changes between that initial approval and the comprehensive permit, if those changes have whacked the project out of compliance with their regulations. So they've taken the position basically that this is all kind of as a result of an ongoing local review process. We're going to let that go, and then we'll take a look if and when there's a comprehensive permit that's issued, if it's still consistent with our findings and our regulations at final approval. Contingent upon all of that is the withdrawal of the project eligibility application for 652, because that project is now combined with 648. 652 is no longer a project. So 648 is one project, 652 is gone. We'll be continuing that hearing in September with some additional information and studies from, from that applicant. So that was 190 seconds, but that's all I've got.
That's a good, that's a good update. I had that moment where I thought they were withdrawing, and I got like all excited, but no side talk.
I just, I know we've talked about this a few times, but like, moving forward, I do think we should talk about timing because I'm not, honestly, I don't mean to be nasty, but I'm not willing to stay at 11 o'clock at these meetings.
That's fair, that's fair.
I'll just have, I'll bow out at an appropriate time, or we'll just, I would rather have more meetings because I feel like we get nothing done in the, between 11 o'clock and midnight. It's just.
No, I totally agree with you.
You know, we need to be more streamlined.
Yep, that's fair.
Some of the conversations go on way too long.
Well, I think perhaps, you know, there's any number of things we can do to make it move faster. One of them is to sort of say to the members of the public that the speeches are limited to five minutes.
And to the applicants, we had some more applicants.
So I agree 100%.
Yeah, and to the applicants as well.
And to the applicants, too. We should probably get an agenda from the applicants, hear what are you going to speak to? How much time do you need? You know what, that's not going to fit this week.
Yeah, because I mean, that's what we do with town meeting. You can, you can only go on for so long. And so, and then it's, it's always wonderful, you can always tell the members of the public that they could put it in an email.
Yeah, and also, I'll even say on me, like, so maybe we should hold our questions, because a lot of it's back and forth between us and them, and maybe we should hold our questions till they're done, and then just fire off the questions like we go around.
Well, you know, that's, there's two ways of thinking about that. I mean, I do a lot of public speaking to attorneys, I do a lot of training and stuff, and there's always a question of, do you take the questions?
Yeah, I get it.
As you are talking, or do you wait till the end?
No, I get it.
And the problem is, half the time, if people have a head, question in their head.
Yeah, forget it, I get it.
They're not listening to anything.
Right, right.
Yeah, you're holding it.
I know, we just got to think of something, though, because like, it's not fair to the public, and it's not fair to us, and I'll just call it out there, I'm not being lazy, I just don't want to be here all night.
Well, I mean, you know, the chair could look at me and say, shut up, we've heard you a thousand times, Kevin.
Yeah, no, it's.
You know, I mean, but.
I don't think any one person talks too much. I think it's just.
I think this was, I think that 4:40 Granite Ave.
We're doing a lot in one night.
There were, there were so many topics, and we were taking one at a time, and tonight we talked about all of them. And then the public talked about all of them.
There's too much in one.
Their presentation was way longer than it needed to be.
I know, I was surprised, but.
It was.
So, and Marion is very verbose, and I love her, I think she's wonderful, but I just, I was having trouble, like.
Because I had a lot of questions I didn't even bother asking because I didn't want them to go on longer.
Yeah, and I, I know.
I wrote them down.
That's a complicated project, and we, we had, we had a very, it was a hard discussion. We had a lot of different opinions and.
You have to complicate it.
What other comment I thought of, sorry, I'm going to be making it longer, I don't want to, but, because there was some questions about like what we used to do with people who used to respond in, and we don't need to do this because it killed, it wastes a lot of paper.